Good evening, everyone. We'll get started with our meeting. This is Wednesday, August 16th, regular meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. It's approximately seven o'clock. You can all join me and rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Donovan.
President.
Counselor Rowan.
Here.
Counselor Foley.
Here.
Counselor St. Clair.
Here.
Counselor Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Chieso.
Here.
Chairman Beidai.
Here. And our next item is general public comments. This is your opportunity to speak to the council. You have three minutes to speak. We do ask that we stay within the decorum of which the council has in its ordinances and that you stay factual and try not to personalize your comments. If you can say your name and address to the clerk's record, please.
My name is Michael Doyle. I live at Shady Lane in Thelmoth. I'm the owner of ThelmothToday.me. I've done a number of stories about the town of Scarborough. Most of it deals with the police department and misconduct there. I've reduced the last 300 articles from my website into a print edition. This is a six by nine inch version that's going to be available and also an eight and a half by 11. The first 195 pages of the book is dedicated to all Scarborough activity. And the cover is the actual statistics of the website. In the last two years ending December 31st, we had 2.7 million hits on the website and 42,000 new readers. And I think you'll find a lot of interesting stuff in the book. Last August, a year ago today, we had 245,000 hits in one month. The average commercial website in the United States has 7,000 hits a year, and we were getting 60,000 a week. So I think if you're interested, you can go to ThelmothToday.me, order a book. The first 195 pages will be a substantial amount of information about Scarborough and the misconduct in the police department. And one of the interesting things was when Mr. Hall was in court with us, he disclosed that he withheld over 1,000 emails that were under a freedom of access request. I moved for an in-camera review and the court released 27 out of 1,169. Now, you have to wonder what was in the other 1,142 that was so sensitive that I couldn't see them. Now, this was done during work hours on work computers paid for by the taxpayers. So we're still pursuing some more information about that. But I think you'll find it interesting. Everyone who's read the first four or five pages can't wait to get the book in their hands full-time. Thank you.
Marge, the Sanctus 54 Beechridge Road. I'm making a public comment about public comments. We're all referred to our procedure for addressing the council, but I don't know how many of you have actually read it. There is a provision in there to come up a second time. So if you've stood in line and you've used your three minutes and you want to come back, you're allowed to do that. It does say it should be new and pertinent information, as it was pointed out to me, who is to decide if it's new and pertinent information. But one of the things that I think we should all agree to is it shouldn't be to criticize all the people who came before you who didn't agree with your opinion. So I would just like to point out that that did happen at the last council meeting, and it has happened many other times in the past. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. If it's not yours, that's fine, too. But the opportunity you have to come to the podium is to state your own opinion and to state facts or whatever else you might have to support that information, not to criticize those who don't agree with you.
Carol Rancourt, 23, Black Point Road, Scarborough. I rise tonight as the chair of the Scarborough Seniors Committee to share with you a vote that we took at our last, excuse me, meeting on Tuesday morning. And this is in regard to the future of the present Scarborough Police Barracks and Fire Barracks. We want you to know, as Scarborough seniors, we are very appreciative of Martin's point for sharing their space, but we are already outgrowing it. We're beginning to have to turn people away for the Wednesday lunches, including people who have wheelchairs because there just isn't enough room for them. We're asking the council to reconsider the decision about the funding of the new police barracks, or police station, I shouldn't call it barracks because it's not. I'm thinking of the old state police barracks, oh, police station and fire department, and withhold the sale of that building, of the current building, until a community center or senior center can be built so that it can, in the interim, be used as a senior center. We know that it has its issues, but it has way more space than anything we have available to us in town for senior programming. So we would like that to be part of your considerations as you progress with this wonderful plan. Thank you.
Well, I unplugged something, I think.
(laughing).
I'm Susan Hamels, and I live at Three Bay Street. In spite of our town manager's letter to the public of July 14th, where he talks at length about improvements made to the budget process this year, which added transparency, inclusiveness, and clarity, we're not seeing an improved end product. We're here tonight to talk about the budget again. I'd like to speak about what I see as a continuing lack of transparency. First, I'm going to repeat a point I made last week about our lack of budget forecasting. Our school budget this year used up the last of the $2.1 million that was left from the Wentworth Construction Project. So we start next year's budget already deep in a hole. Add to this something that you haven't heard either the town manager or any councilor speak about, and that is the big tax abatement that the Maine Supreme Judicial Court required the town to pay on an ongoing property tax abatement case. This case involves approximately 50 taxpayers in the beach communities and goes back to 2012. Final details are still being worked, are working their way through the court system because the taxpayers have filed an appeal of what they considered a woefully inadequate abatement by our town's Board of Assessment. What we do know is that the payment will be at least $475,000 and could ultimately be four times that amount. A decision is expected by December, and payment will be made most likely this fiscal year. This is all public information. What's disturbing to me about this lack of transparency is that these are items which the public has a right to know and which the council has a need to know to better inform their decisions regarding the budget and when other important spending projects are considered, like the public safety buildings. Where's the inclusiveness that our town manager spoke about? Is it these one-way public comment periods? The council isn't listening. When citizens have a point of view which differs from that of certain council members, they are shamed and accused of being against the community and education, and it feels like the council just doubles down on what they've already decided. I like to compare the dysfunction of town government at this point to someone going on a diet. You can talk all you want about the diet, about nutrition, whatever, what you need to do, but until you really get serious and change your actions, you'll never lose any weight. Likewise, the town manager and council can talk all day long about process improvements, but until they really listen to the public and follow through on the changes that are needed, we will stay stuck right where we are.
Larry Hartwell, Nine Puritan Drive. I know you're having a second reading on the school budget. Will there be time for comments at that point?
Once again, Mike Doyle, Shady Lane, Thelmoth, owner of ThelmothToday.me. I'd like to make a follow-up comment about the council rules. There's only two things you can control legally, and that's cursing or threats from the public forum. Any other objection or any other attempt to either control me or have me ejected from the meeting will once again result in a lawsuit where the taxpayers have to pay for legal fees. I've had three of them dismissed on technicalities. If you give me enough practice, I'm eventually going to get in front of a jury and let a jury decide whether your rules are legal or not. The hearing that I won, basically, was where Franco wanted me to pay for cellphone photos that I had taken of the 1,372 emails I inspected, and I laughed about it in front of Mr. Hall and Todi and the lady who's in charge of IT out in front of the courthouse. You guys initially wanted $3,900 for compiling the 1,372, having Bernstein sure to charge you $3,900 to review them before you release them to me. This is just a waste of money because if you guys stop doing really bad things in the offices and making email histories of them, you won't have to have somebody scour them for embarrassing information. But I've hooked up with a company or an organization in Boston called the New England First Amendment Coalition, and they're interested in joining me in a federal lawsuit against Scarborough for some huge damages. So if you want to challenge me on freedom of access, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, I look forward to joining you in federal court, and I think there'll be a lot of interesting activity. Thank you.
Anybody else I would like to speak? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment and moving on to item number five. Minutes for July, motion and acceptance of minutes for July 19th, 2017's regular meeting, August 2nd, special meeting and August 8th, special meeting. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second. Is there any edits or modifications that need to be noted for the clerk? Not seeing any, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And I am not aware of any adjustments to the agenda. I've already signed treasurer's warrants and moving on to the first order. Order number 17-055 is a seven o'clock public hearing on the proposed Fourth Amendment to contract zone I, or is that, yeah, I, Frank R. Goodwin E. and F. Limited Liability Company and Raymond Seafield, also known as Land Rover Dealership, located at 371 U.S. Route 1. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing if anybody would like to speak on this item. Not seeing any, I will close the public hearing. And moving on to order number 17-064, it's a seven o'clock public hearing, an action on the new request for a food handler's license for James Morandi, doing business as Fairhaven Dunes located at 3 East Grand Avenue, tabled from the June, sorry, July 19th, 2017 Town Council meeting. And I would like to open up the public hearing if anybody would like to get up and speak on the food handler's license. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Moving on to order number 17-065, it's a seven o'clock public hearing.
Turn action on that last item.
Yes.
I apologize. Where's, oh, and action. I apologize. Thank you. So moving back to order number 17-064, and is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from council? Counselor St. Clair.
To the clerk, this is, I'm assuming at this point, since it's brought back to us, that everything's kosher.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Good. How's my approval then?
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Counselor Rowan. Order number 17-065, it's a seven o'clock public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Higgins Beach character-based zoning districts. Before we have public comment, I'd like to turn it over to the manager and to our planning department for a brief presentation on the item.
Yes, Jay Chase is just making his way to the podium. Jay has been involved with this process since the beginning and has a few prepared remarks, I guess. Namely, there's some changes that will be recommended by way of amendments in second reading, and perhaps we can at least highlight those tonight before public comment is taken.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Chair, if you're prepared. As noted in the council packet, you should have received the memo from me dated August 11th, I believe it was, that highlights a few additional changes from the first reading for the Higgins Beach Character Code. A couple of those, or at least one of those, we talked about during the initial first reading, particularly with regards to the language for non-conforming structures. That was something that was still under review, and there's been some tweaks to that. So we actually are proposing to add a sub, sort of a subsection under the first paragraph that's really designed to enable structures that don't meet front yard setbacks to be able to add on to the front, to the front of the house. The reason for that is in the Character Code, we have a minimum front yard setback. We also have a maximum front yard setback. So the prior standard source said non-conforming structures can add on within the building placement, basically the building envelope, but if someone were set back, say, 30 or 40 feet from their front yard, the maximum front yard setback is 21 feet, they really ostensibly wouldn't be able to meet that front yard setback. So that's what that language is designed to do. The other item that was in your packet and noted in the August 11th memo had to do with porch encroachments. One of our Eagle Eye residents picked up on something we failed to strike through. And actually, as we looked at that, one of the other things that came up had to do with porches are currently, or, yes, currently, under the adopted language states that they're allowed only with the primary entrance, and they're allowed certain encroachments into setbacks. But with this revised change, it was thought that, or thought that porches might be permissible or should be permissible, not just with primary entrances, but on other areas of the building. This gets to the idea of sort of being more flexible with the allowed components. So the proposal in your packet provides for certain setback reductions, if you will, for porches, particularly on the rear yard and in a secondary setback. A secondary setback is someone who might have a corner lot and one road is considered their primary, and the others considered their secondary. And then, really, there's just two other very small administrative changes that are being proposed. One, under the current language, we currently have language that says that buildings that are less than 15 feet from a property line need to meet fire rating standards. But really, the building code requirement is a five-foot setback, and so we think that was just an error in the original adoption process, and we're proposing to strike the 15 and make that a five. So anyone who's within five feet of their building, within another building or their setback would need to meet the fire rating standards. And then the other is just with the proposed language for non-conforming use, right now, the language that we proposed at first reading, the new section was titled "Nonconforming Uses Structures," which probably add the word "and" in between "nonconforming uses" and "structures." So very much an administrative item, but since we're here doing the process, I flag it for you all. So like I said, hopefully that memo would clarify these things for you, and appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask if the chair of the ordinance committee has anything to add regarding the process that was undertaken so the citizens might understand that before we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, for the Character Code, that didn't come before the ordinance committee. That was long-range planning, reviewed it carefully. I think Counselor Chieso might be able to speak to that, but certainly, I attended the June workshop that was held at the Higgins Beach Association Clubhouse. It was well-attended. There was a significant opportunity to understand what was being done. The attitude that has been expressed by the community is that they think the code definitely goes in the right direction. It needs to be tweaked to be able to reduce the height of structures, the massing of structures, and the simplification of roof lines. And that's really what I heard from the community at Higgins Beach. And this ordinance apparently does it.
Counselor Chieso, as our liaison to long-range planning, anything to add to the public?
No, I'll just piggyback on what Bill said. We did look at it kind of intently around the structure, side structures and additional garage space or something, I think that, and we did review the fire code substantially. So certainly no objections that we noted in the long-range planning and haven't heard any citizen feedback negatively. And also attended the session down at Higgins Beach, and it was very, very positive, very open, and I think it's a step in the right direction. And again, this isn't firm and final, this is a living document, so the tweaks, I think, are designed to kind of get more in line with the overall intent of what the Character Code was to begin with. So no opposition, no concerns.
Thank you. With that information, I'd like to open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to get up and speak on the item, you're welcome to go to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Can I ask you a question? If we can wait.
Good evening. I'm Walter Wilson from Design Company. I do a lot of work throughout New England, and a lot of work at Higgins Beach. I think currently I've done over 60 projects in Higgins Beach alone. In relation to this ordinance, I recognize that a lot of, I got some notes here, I haven't had time to write them out intelligibly, and so I'm going to skip around. I hope not too confusing. I recognize that a lot of work and time and thought has gone into the character-based ordinance. The CDCR-1 district was established in order to make properties able to expand or be rebuilt on the smaller-sized lots. The setbacks were reduced and the lot coverage was changed into a building envelope area, and that allowed for more square footage of construction on the lots. During the various meetings leading up to the adoption of the current ordinance, I was, and still am, in agreement with the reduction in setbacks, but I raised concern about the imposing of design restraints on long-established properties at Higgins Beach. It has always been, it's always seemed to me that the property owner should be able to construct a home, add to a home, or remodel a home in a way that suits his personal taste and needs. Of course, the zoning ordinance should set certain dimensional requirements that are needed to protect the neighborhood and the community. In Higgins Beach, over 100 years of history has evolved from the original styles of structures into a variety of styles that are now present. This is the character of Higgins Beach diversity. The CDCR-1 district regulations were set up to control mostly new construction and do not address existing properties. The CDCR-1 zone allows for three types of buildings to be built: a cottage, a bungalow, and a new house, or a home. During that review process, I stated that many times at the meetings that the cottage and bungalow styles would not be utilized, and that only the house style would be built. And that is what's taken place. Most of the homes at Higgins Beach do not meet the proposed restrictions that this new proposal will dictate. And I'm talking about the existing homes that have been there for decades. The new proposal limits structures to a rectangular box with one roof line. The majority of homes at Higgins Beach do not comply with this basic form. The proposed ordinance states that the homes are too large and have various design features that are not in character with Higgins Beach. Well, as far as the height goes, prior to the ordinance that's in effect now, the height restriction was 35 feet. This ordinance put it at 32 feet, the we have now. The proposed ordinance will even reduce that more, not in the maximum allowed under the ordinance, but in the way the fine print says you have to build a building.
Mr. Wilson, just so you know, you are out of time, but if you can wrap that up for us, it'd be appreciated.
Well, I think there's a lot of things I wrote down that I was going to talk about. I indicated that I didn't have enough time to talk about them all. Some of those I've already discussed with Jay and Brian. But I will say that the history of Higgins Beach has created a variety of styles down there, and this ordinance puts you into a box, and you can only add boxes to it. And it's out of style with the character of Higgins Beach. And I would propose, I'll jump ahead a couple pages, but enclosed. I would ask that the council send this revision of the ordinance back to the planning board for a workshop followed by a public hearing in order to thoroughly review and understand what these implications are for the Higgins Beach community. If that is not done, I would hope that the council would at least allow a time period of at least three months or so after the passage of the ordinance before it's put in effect so that the projects that are being planned could be received, could receive building approvals without having to start all over again. And last, if I find my page. In any event, I would hope that the council would not approve the revised character-based zoning ordinance in its current form until a more detailed and constructive review has been completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else I would like to get up and speak?
Melissa Cripio, 31 Morning Street. I also was at the June meeting, and I walked away with some understanding of broad strokes discussion and some specifics about roof lines and height. I wasn't aware that there was a finalized proposal until yesterday, and that's on me. You could make a case that that's on me. And if it were only me that that was on, I wouldn't even be standing here, but every neighbor save two that I talked to neighbor saved two that I talked to today also wasn't aware of it, so I feel a duty, I guess, to kind of speak out for them. There were some changes in the proposals, I read the 57 pages, and there are some changes in there that aren't about roof lines and aren't about height that concern me, and I would just hope that we can have enough time between tonight and when the final vote is, that maybe we can work again with the planning department and work that out, work those tweaks out, so that the whole community is really informed about what the final proposal is. Thank you.
And if I can ask, when you do speak, if you can bring the microphone closer to you, because I had some people in the back I don't believe can hear some of the comments. Perfect.
Hi, Regina Day, 24 Ocean Avenue at Higgins Beach. And I appreciate all of your work. I know that there was a lot of effort and cost that went into researching what we have now. And I too was at, not this June, but the previous workshop at the clubhouse at Higgins Beach. And it was my understanding that this ordinance, the current ordinance, would make it so that people who had existing homes would be able, able to bring them along a little bit at a time. And, you know, that appealed to me as a working family who's been at Higgins Beach since the 60s and has children in college. So my feeling is, you know, that with the height restriction especially, that kind of catered to folks who are able to jump on the phone and hire the consultants and get the surveyor over there that day, bring in the architect, and do it all quick, where many of us who have been there a darn long time aren't able to do that. So I ask you to consider again the unique nature of our place and to give it a lot of thought before you just pass this by. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing, thank you. Moving on to Order Number 17-066, it's a 7:00 p.m. public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, Section 12, sign regulations. Before we open it up to public hearing, I'd like to ask the Chair of the Ordinance Committee to provide us with an overview of the work and process undertaken so far.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to speak about the process, to, so that anyone watching out there and the audience hasn't been as current on this as they might want to be, this is the public hearing stage. We had a first reading. We'll have a public hearing now, and then we'll have a second reading at which there'll be a opportunity for public input in advance of our voting on it. There may also be amendments. The ordinance committee process here was really about four or five months, where Counselor Roman in St. Clair and I worked hard to try and come up with something that would address the concerns that we had identified through communications from the community as well as other counselors. They really broke down into a number of categories. The first was that a U.S. Supreme Court case of 2015 established that signage on the roadway in the right-of-way needed to be content-neutral. And what that simply means is, you can't have a set of rules for Realtor signs, different set of rules for church supper signs, different set of rules for political signs. They all have to be subject to things like, they can be up the same amount of time, they have to be down, because we're talking about a temporary sign ordinance, a certain period of time, they have to be within the same size. Can't vary those things at all. They have to be content-neutral. So that was a big challenge, which I must say, the planning department, Jay Chase and the Assistant Town Manager, Larissa Crockett, did a wonderful job. We worked endlessly at drafts to get that aspect done, because that was something that the ordinance committee really needed to be handed as a work product. The second thing that we tried to do with these changes was to protect the scenic vistas and ecologically sensitive areas of Scarborough. And these are really the Scarborough Marsh areas that you see from Pine Point Road, Route 1, and Black Point Road. There were others that certainly qualified as scenic vistas in our community, because we have many. But we were guided by our attorney, who said we needed to properly tailor and restrict it to just those areas that seemed most appropriate. And so we did. We consulted with Scarborough Land Trust. They had a number of properties that they suggested be restricted, but we chose not to do that, just to err on the side of not overreaching. Another area that we tried to address was to promote public safety. There has been an obvious proliferation of temporary signs on the roadways in recent years, and we wanted to be able to address that, particularly at intersections, because signs along the roadway, people can see them, read them, process it without putting themselves, pedestrians, bicyclists, or other motorists at risk. But when you get within X feet, and in this case, we chose 50 feet, of very busy, high accident intersections, we felt it was appropriate to restrict signs within that 50 feet. This is within the right-of-way. 51 feet, yes, you can, you can put, you put your sign, whatever it might be. But for those eight intersections, and they were identified as the most problematic from accident point of view by Chief Moulton and the data that the police department keeps. Lastly, we wanted to just control just the general proliferation of identical signs. And the way the ordinance reads at the moment is identical signs or similar signs. I attended the planning board public hearing recently, and the suggestion was made by several planning board members that the use of a phrase like "similar signs" is problematic, because who's to say whether a sign for a particular candidate in one color is similar to one that sends a slightly different message, either about that candidate or about that issue? That issue of concern was also raised by several members of the public in emails that we've gotten. So I've been making a list of changes that I think might be appropriate. I'm going to try and confer with my fellow ordinance committee members so that we can meet in advance of the second reading, so as to be able to gain a consensus on how to take advantage of all the good input that we've received from the public. The proliferation of signs issue was addressed by saying, you can have a sign every one-tenth of a mile, which I've learned is 528 feet. And so, and people said, well, geez, that sounds restrictive. So I said, well, you're going 35, 40 miles an hour along the road, how often would you see that same sign? It's every eight seconds. And I just said to myself, every eight seconds, I think I've seen enough. If I go for several miles and every eight seconds, I'm seeing the same sign with the same message. So that's, that's how we at least came to feel that was an appropriate setback. It isn't actually every 528 feet, because the way we wrote it, we had to deal with cross streets. And we agreed that the setback distance of 528 feet would not apply to cross streets. So every time you come to a cross street, of which our town has many, you would then be able to have another sign. So it gets to be, it's what I would consider a, an appropriate setback dimension. It's, it's not unnecessarily rigorous. So other things that we looked at, people raised questions about how to measure distances from when you can have a sign to enter the next one. And we're working on that. I met with Jay Chase, the planning director. We're going to come up with language, because that, as pointed out to us by members of the public, is a very legitimate point. And we hadn't really worked out the details of that. And we are working that out with the planning, the planning director, and hopefully then the ordinance committee will be able to come together on that.
Is that it, Counselor?
Another good comment that we received from the public was that we had a six-week interim period when signs needed to be removed. You can have them up for three consecutive weeks, and then they had to be removed for six weeks. It was pointed out that, and we're in the midst of it right now, that we've had three consecutive referendum votes. And those votes would restrict inappropriately the placement of signs for the, whether you're a pro supporter of passing the school budget or opposed to passing the school budget. And it was never our intention to, to impede that process. So again, another change, which I think could quite appropriately be reduced from six weeks to one week. So those are kind of the amendments that we're working on. We've got a couple other technical amendments, not worth mentioning here, but that's kind of where we are right now.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, point of clarity, just for the record, I think, on the agenda, it says public hearing. In our packet, it says second reading, so we may want to adjust that for the minutes for next time. It's just administrative.
The second reading on the proposed will be held.
It's in schedule. Oh, it has been scheduled, my apologies. Thank you. Sorry. Anything better than that?
So, sorry. With that, are there any public comments?
Mike Earl, Shady Lane, Falmouth. I'm always surprised at the arrogance of government, local government, doing things like this. In Falmouth, I'm glad to hear that you were a consultant attorney, because in Falmouth, they consulted an attorney to do a protocol that you had to fill out to do a freedom of access request. We come to find out, Town Council in Falmouth didn't have any authority to amend a state law. They spent $3,000 with Drummond and Woodson, just wasted money. No one's ever filled out the protocol, it's never been used, but they spent $3,000 to do it. But I'm glad you folks have checked with an attorney. Content-based restrictions, and every sign has content, violates U.S. Supreme Court decision in Whitney v. California, 274 U.S., 357, 375, 1927, Brandeis J. concurring. Content-based restrictions are presumptively unconstitutional as in R.A.V. versus the City of St. Paul, Minnesota, 505 U.S., 377, 382, 1992, and even more stringent in Reed v. Town of Gilbert, Arizona, 576 U.S.-2015, which is, I think, the counselor was referring to. That decision was reversing the Ninth District's decision. This is going to be one of those things that's not going to survive the first challenge. You guys are going to waste thousands and thousands of dollars in legal fees, because you cannot have content-based advertising restrictions on, especially on political decisions on budgets, town council, elections, things like that. The most stringent protection in freedom of speech is political free speech, and you cannot control this with a town ordinance. And if you want to try to do that, I hope I have a chance to challenge it somehow with a sign someplace in Scarborough. And having signs 528 feet apart even might be something that you like to see. I think the state law was 30 feet apart. That's not even enforceable. In the Town of Falmouth, we have political signs every 15 inches, so people can read from one sign to the next. You know why it's not enforced? Because they can enforce it. It's a violation of a U.S. Supreme Court ruling three different ways. So if you guys go forward with this, all the taxpayers here, that's where your tax dollar is going to go, in legal fees, trying to defend something that's indefensible. And the guy, the thought that you guys come up with these cocky, mammy ideas is just unbelievable. This is why I have so much material in the Town of Scarborough. I don't have problems with the Town of Falmouth. I asked Bill Shane for information, have it the next day. Nat Tupper in Yarmouth, next day. The two towns that dog, dogged the, resist information is this town at the highest level I've ever seen, because there's probably more bad stuff than this town, and the second town is Falmouth that I deal with. So if you guys want to go ahead with this, just get the legal checkbook going, because you're going to be paying a ton of money, and I hope I get a chance to litigate over this.
Larry Harwell, 9 Puritan Drive. I see two points to this ordinance. One is to address the Supreme Court on neutral content. That's pretty simple to, to straighten out in, in the current one. Just eliminate the references to the real estate, Realtor signs, the political signs, the for-sale signs, so forth, and have the one set of criteria. We've taken care of it. The other thing that I see being addressed here is simply political signs. It's not stated, but that's what it's all about. Now, I know people in this room, I have friends that don't like all these signs, and they don't want to see them all clustered together. A lot of people say that, depend, no matter what perspective they have politically. But we are talking about temporary signs here. Three weeks, three weeks at a maximum. Under the heading of sensitive or scenic areas, at least nine streets or sections of street will no longer be allowed to have any temporary signs, including, of course, the political signs. No one wants to see these signs end up in the marsh and, or in streams. So why don't we look and say, okay, if the street's within 25 or 50 feet of a body of water, then we prohibit it there, not all, this nine streets being taken out here. The worst part about this ordinance is having the signs one-tenth of a mile apart. Currently, it's 30 feet apart. A tenth of a mile, as we've heard earlier, it's 528 feet, a tenth of a mile. Are people, are political parties, groups going to have to hire surveyors to put them 528 feet to be in compliance? Are you going to have Public Works go out and put monuments in 528 feet on every major road in town so that we comply with this? It's, it's ridiculous. Beyond the logistics, questions still to be asked, questions needing answers. Why, after the resounding defeat of the Town Council approved school budget in June, did we get such a restrictive temporary ordinance signed within weeks? Way beyond addressing the simple mandates of the court. Does this ordinance look more like one designed to reduce political free speech? Particularly citizens with opinions that are different than the council? Does reducing voter turnout serve some purpose we have yet to learn about? Here we are in Scarborough. Have we devolved to Augusta and, and Washington? Questions, questions to be answered.
Good evening. Benjamin Howard, 7 Windsor Pines. I spoke at the first reading in regards to this ordinance specifically, in regards to Section J, stating that it was unconstitutionally restricting free speech in the regards to banning temporary signs at the listed locations. At the time, I referenced two cases, Pelts v. City of South Euclid and Baldwin v. City of Red, Baldwin v. Redwood City. Both towns had very similar ordinances to ours. There were some clear differences, but each ordinance argued that it was for aesthetics, safety, and cleanliness of the town. I've gone in and read the court comments from each of those cases, and would like to read some here. In the case of Pelts v. City of South Euclid, the comments were, "We are of the opinion that the purpose to keep the streets clean and of good appearance is insufficient to justify an ordinance which prohibits a person rightfully on a public street from handing out literature to one willing to receive it. As we have pointed out, the public convenience and respect to cleanliness in the streets does not justify an exertion of the police power, which invades the free communication of information and opinion secured by the Constitution." To go on to the Baldwin v. Redwood City case, the court comments were, "Much that we encounter offends our aesthetics. It is not our political immoral sensibility, but the burden normally falls upon the viewer to avoid further bombardment of his sensibilities simply by averting his eyes." Again, I agree, these signs were annoying, but it is as simple as just don't look at them. Also, in each of these decisions, the courts found that temporary signs generally were political signs and made much of their rulings in those in that regard, stating that banning these signs at the location takes away from a very pertinent form of communication. Signs provide a more localized platform for people to express their opinions than Signs provide a more localized platform for people to express their opinions than radio and are very cheap and probably the cheapest way other than hand pamphlets to hand out. Also, to go on further, in the case of public safety, remind you that this case is from 1971. The court comments were, "Considering the universe of distractions that face motorists on our city's streets, temporary political posters are not sufficiently significant to justify such a serious restriction upon political expression." Remind you, 1971, this is before the cellphone is put in the hands of drivers. Now, I have reached out to Chief Moulton and got the information about the traffic accidents of each of these stops, but I failed to follow up and get the dates of these accidents so that I could run an analysis to see if there was statistical significance that would suggest political signs, temporary, actually caused an increase in accidents. During the time for the second reading, I will try to get this information. If I find that there is nothing there, I would urge the council to please amend Section J of this ordinance. Thank you.
G. Marie Caterina, 311 Gorham Road. I didn't originally intend to speak tonight, and actually, I was very glad to hear that this is not the second hearing. Just a few things that I'd like to mention. My concerns with this particular ordinance, one is as a real estate broker, real estate professional, we frequently place temporary signs, and it could be that I misread something in the ordinance today because I didn't get a chance to read it very closely, but there was something to the effect of a six-month limit on private properties in this market. Okay, if I've got a sign up there, it better be gone before six months or I'm not doing my job. But there may be markets where it could be longer, but it could be that I misconstrued something that I read there, and if I did, I apologize for that, but just something to take into consideration. My other concerns are, I think you're getting too far into the weeds as to where to ban them for so-called scenic views. I absolutely understand the marsh area, but to then further delineate other parts in town, meh, I think that's getting a bit much. And then my third concern is enforcement. It's like, who's going to enforce this? I know, having been a political candidate, our town clerk gets called frequently on, oh, so-and-so signs this and so-and-so signs that, and having her, or whoever's in that job, having to deal with that can be a real pain to be blunt about it. So that would be my other concern. And then my very last point is, the main Department of Transportation already has rules out there for political signs. In particular, I would suggest that the council go back and look at what DOT already says about intersections and placement of signs or whatever, because to have two sets, I can just see it during political season now. So, as consistent and as simple as we can get it and being fair and not infringing on people's rights to have signs would be the way to go. Thank you.
Susan Hamel, three Bay Street. These ordinance changes clearly target political signs. Yeah, some of them make good sense, like protecting scenic vistas such as the Scarborough Marsh along Route One, and some are required because of the Supreme Court case, which require municipalities to be content neutral in their approach to signs. And I agree that the political signs can be really annoying. We all remember how annoying they were last fall, all along Route One, when we saw the Trump signs and the Hillary signs, just one right after another. But these changes proposed tonight go far beyond the changes that are required by Reed and Common Sense. Temporary signs would be prohibited from the town's eight busiest intersections, basically our town center, and the claim that this is to ensure public safety, there is no evidence to suggest that these signs present a hazard. The proposed ordinance would also prohibit signs along the entire length of the Pine Point and Black Point Roads with a couple of little areas where you could put a sign. And whether it's 500 feet, I'm not even sure of that, so there'd be one sign. Temporary signs such as those used before elections are a rudimentary form of communications in the digital age, yet they remain a very important and effective form of communication. These ordinance changes as proposed will limit our ability to inform and educate the broader electorate on important issues and will lead to smaller voter turnout, result in town management making decisions on key issues with limited public input. We believe that an engaged and informed electorate is best able to make decisions affecting all of us. Anything which limits discussion, involvement, and engagement of the electorate hurts us all and is an infringement on our First Amendment right to free speech. We should celebrate the engagement that we've had in Scarborough and not try to squelch it. The timing of these proposed changes, coming in the midst of this summer's heated budget referendum process, feels like a personal vendetta. Let's just tattle this until some time has passed after we pass the budget.
Anybody else I'd like to speak? Not seeing any. We will close the public hearing, and there is no action. Next order is order number 17-067. It's a seven o'clock public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 601, Town of Scarborough's traffic ordinance, Section 25, regarding parking restrictions. And I'd like to turn it to the manager to provide an overview.
This is really just a fairly simple housekeeping matter. It is a modest amendment to the traffic ordinance clarifying parking on East Grand Avenue in the area of Pine Point, intersection of Pine Point Road. I'm not sure if Chairman Donovan, the chairman of the ordinance committee, has any further input, but...
Yes, the police department brought this to the ordinance committee's attention. It really involves designation of parking locations needing clarification rather than eliminating parking. It really was just trying to be more precise to update the ordinance in that regard. It was also updating the spaces reserved for businesses, and the ordinance provisions for East Grand Avenue had some allowance of limited business rights, and as businesses had changed over time, that needed to be updated. So, pretty administrative. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open up a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on the item? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And moving on to order number 17-068. It's a seven o'clock public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 604A, Town of Scarborough's Horse Beach Permit Ordinance, Section 604A-6, Regulations of Horses on the Beach. If we could have an overview from the ordinance committee chair? Certainly. Again, pretty simple amendment. The ability to keep Pine Point Beach clean is important. We do allow, along with Old Orchard Beach, permits to have people ride on the beach from the end of the summer season through the winter into the spring. It is, we originally had a provision like this in the ordinance, but Old Orchard Beach did not. We combined our process with Old Orchard Beach just to coordinate the issuance of permits, and we dropped it at that time. Input from the public has indicated to us that it remains a problem, and I think Common Sense tells us it's a problem. These are very large animals, the horses, getting on and off to pick up. Waste is no easy task, so these bunbag devices that can be attached to the back of horses so as to collect the manure is something that we feel is appropriate. Thank you. With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak about our horse permits? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. And moving on to order, actually, I forgot to mention under adjustments, order number 17-073 was a public hearing for a special amusement permit that has actually been withdrawn by the applicant, so we will not be taking that up. I apologize for not mentioning it earlier. Order number 17-074 is a 7:00 p.m. public hearing and action on the new request for a food handler's permit from P&amp;E Fitness doing business at Lifestyle Fitness Center located at 29 Pleasant Hill Road. Is there anybody, I'd like to open up to a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the food handler's license? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion from council?
Some would.
Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Moving into old business, order number 17-071, a second reading on the fiscal year 2018 school budget. I would like to open up the floor for any comments from the public. Would anybody like to speak? Not seeing any. I'll turn it over to the manager. Apologize.
Excuse me for my tardiness. Larry Hartwell, nine, Puritan Drive. $50,000 suggestion that we reduce the budget at the last meeting. That's about one-tenth of a percent. So, 6.8, 6.9, tomato, tomato, really doesn't make any difference. It's now August. Many people on all sides have worked very hard for literally months on this budget. Given the late date, let's consider providing the schools with $1,200,000 more than last year. If you will be satisfied, then we can move on and hopefully do better next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Richard, 2080's Grand Avenue, Fibery's Lane. At one of the council meetings, one of the school board members was concerned because we are at it again with multiple vote situation. How can this happen when the process between the town council and the school board went off so well? So let's look at this process that works so well. The school board prepares their budget on the needs and wants of the schools. They are not given a maximum percentage increase by the council, so basically, they can disregard the taxpayer's ability to pay, the cost of living index, the increase in social security, and a number of other things. There's also no dialogue between the taxpayers and the school board. There is a public comment position where I'm standing right now. I'm talking to you, you are looking at me. That's about what the dialogue is that we have. So where does it lead the public? The taxpayer has to see the town budget cut to meet the demands of the school budget. That's a possibility. We can live with what the school board proposes by voting yes, second, or negatively weigh in at the voting booth. If the vote prevails, negative, no vote prevails, those taxpayers are villainous or villainized as enemies of the children, education, and let's throw in the American way, when all they wanted was a realistic increase to reflect the economy that's going on right now in our state, in what's happening to people with their jobs and so forth. I mentioned in one of my emails to the council that if Scarborough continues on this same path, this same process, next year, and you expect different results, then Scarborough will be the definition of insanity. March 2000, 54 Beechridge Road. I want to clarify that percentage. The school board came in at 2.89. The reason you're hearing the 6.8, 6.9, or whatever, is because of Augusta and the people you have voted in in Augusta who have constantly, over many, many years, every year, taken money away from Scarborough and other towns. We lost 1.4 million this year. So not only do you have raises and utility changes and et cetera, et cetera, the school board budget came in at 2.89 and only went up to that 6.8 to add in the amount that they have to make up because Augusta took it away. So if you're mad at anybody, be mad at your representatives in Augusta.
Wallace Sengler, 233 Holmes Road. I think in the future, we need a new mindset, and that is to look for efficiencies. I was reading the comprehensive plan, and in that plan, it says, "Do more with less resources." And what's been happening is they don't really, the school board doesn't really feel like there's any limitation on how much they can spend, and I'll give you an example. I read in the paper where they were going to have a new position that where the person would interface with businesses and find internships and jobs for students, and the price was going to be $70,000. I, my best man, 30 years ago, Dale Huntress, had that job. He was a teacher. He got a teacher's salary. When they eliminated industrial arts, he went to all the businesses and he found jobs for students, and it was at a teacher's salary. In the future, if the school board would look for efficiencies, maybe we wouldn't be having so many votes. But my son came up with an idea. Why not have this position be like a track coach or a basketball coach? Why not give him a stipend? Why not have a teacher do this job? So one of the things that I advocate for is cost-benefit analysis. How many students are going to get jobs? They have to be 16 or older to start with, and what is this person going to be doing most of the time? After he finds a job for a student, his job's done with that student, so you don't really need $70,000 position, and you don't need a secretary to go with that. And where do you go from there? If you start at $70,000, where are you going to end up? So, you need to be thinking about cost efficiencies and cost-benefit analysis.
Larry Hartwell, nine, Puritan Drive. Something I left out of the conversation is that $2.1 million was taken from reserves and used in the school budget this year. That helped reduce the impact. That $2.1 million won't be there next year.
Jess Libby, 501 Black Point Road. I'm listening to everything that's being said, and I'm really frustrated because before you even came up with the $50,000, which you have to remove because 83 people didn't show up to vote, the Smart Taxes group of Scarborough already said, "We're going to vote no. We're not going to pass this unless they make drastic huge cuts." And that's just crazy. 83 votes. Positions that, you know, that gentleman was talking about? Do you know how many students signed up for that program and who are starting this fall? And it's just gone because of this whole crazy budget process. We need to support our schools. They're not being greedy. They created a budget that was reasonable and worked for the town. It's a 2.91% increase. We just need to pass it. We need to stop the games and all of this back and forth. That's really all I can say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If you'd like to line up, you're welcome to do that as well. Okay.
Hi, I'm Hillary Durgan. I'm Sequoia Lane, and I wasn't going to come up tonight because I'm here every time, and you all know what I'm going to say, which is that I support the schools. I support the people who are making the decisions about the schools. I think the school board has done an excellent job of presenting us with a really responsible budget, and I thank them for all their hard work. I think that if there's any more than a $50,000 reduction, that I probably couldn't support the budget, which I voted for now twice in a row, I voted yes for. I'm not happy with another $50,000 being cut from our budget because I think that you're just, you know, it's like dying a death of a million cuts, or whatever they call it. So... So, I urge you to stick with the fifty thousand and don't go above that, and hopefully we can get this passed and just kind of move on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Not seeing anybody. I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Moving on to the actual motion. So, it's a very long budget order, and I don't think it's necessary to read the entire thing unless there's any objection from council, but I'll go ahead and at least read the section that has impacted the most, and that is, be it further ordered, this is in the form of a motion, be it further ordered that the school budget be reduced by a total of fifty thousand dollars, and therefore the Scarborough Town Council hereby appropriates for school purposes the education operating budget, the new sum of forty-seven million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, resulting in the town of Scarborough raising the sum of forty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and seventeen, sorry, forty-two million, two hundred and four thousand and seventeen dollars as the local share for education operating budget. Be it further ordered that the final result of these changes produce a new total net budget of sixty-two million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, resulting in a projected tax rate increase of two point nine one percent. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions from council? Council Rowan.
So, I had been trying to point out for some time that some of the signs citing the increase in net education budget were causing confusion among the public. Some people expressed some skepticism, some suggested that I was shaming or questioning intelligence to the voters, and some suggested that I was exaggerating the impact. But I have actual proof in print, and I submit to you an article from August eleventh, twenty seventeen, written by Ms. Sochin, and I sent her an email about it, and I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it, but I wanted to read a section. On June thirteenth, fifty-seven percent of residents voted against a proposed forty-seven point four million dollar budget, which represented a seven point four increase, excuse me, seven point four percent increase in spending for education. I'd just like to point out that the, at the time, that proposal was a forty-seven point four million dollar budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen. It was one point six million dollars more than the actual spend in twenty seventeen, which was forty-five point eight million, and that works out to a three point five percent increase. So, the number cited was more than double, and the number that she references, as was pointed out from the podium, is actually the net budget, and that is the increase in spending plus the decrease in revenue. And if not the increase in spending has been suggested. And I don't mean to suggest that Ms. Sochin, Ms. Sochin, or her editor are intentionally misleading us, but it just illustrates my point that there's a lot of confusion around the numbers. So, what we're looking at tonight with the budget that's before us with the fifty thousand is an increase of one point two seven million dollars from the spend in fiscal year twenty seventeen, which is two point seven seven percent increase. And that's a big, big difference. It's about forty percent of what's been represented on the blog that I read yesterday. And again, intentional or not, we're leaving the voters with the impression that spending is way, way up, when that just isn't the case. And so, when we met on the seventh, and we talked, I gave a long and tortured analysis of the things that have been cut and did my, you know, ill-informed analysis of what was a decrease in cost and what was a decrease in, in actual cut, and came up with the analysis that, you know, our budget was thirty-six thousand dollars less than level service. I was corrected at the school board meeting the next night to say that the budget that you're looking at here tonight is two hundred and nine thousand dollars below level service. So, that means that were the school department to do exactly what they did last year, we would be two hundred and nine thousand dollars short, and we wouldn't be able to afford it, given that the costs have gone up to do those things. Now, they've been very creative in the school department, and they've changed priorities, and they moved positions around, but I did want to point out, again, as I do every time I get an opportunity to speak about this budget, I just want to point out the things that we are cutting from the budget, and I appreciate the indulgence of time. So, one of the things that we cut was we, there was a desire and a need to increase the athletic trainer position, and they were going to have a halftime position. That was removed at first reading, excuse me, that was removed from first reading before the first vote. There was a large reduction in staff development, which is training for our staff and our teachers. We reduced supply lines on numerous occasions, which means either teachers are paying for it themselves, those classes are doing without, or parents are contributing those supplies. We eliminated funding for field trips at the middle school. There was a ten percent reduction in the textbook spend at the high school. There was more professional development cut. We eliminated one of the foster-grandparent positions at A Corners. There was a retiring teacher at the high school that we did not backfill the position. There was a limited enrollment in the summer reading academy. Some of the furnishings that are being intended to be replaced on a replacement cycle have been delayed. Similarly, some of the vehicle maintenance has also been delayed. The position that Mr. Fangler referenced in regard to the career and academic coordinator, that position was eliminated. There was a reduction in the behavior specialist, which I lamented last time. There was a reduction in the more curriculum, more professional development, and a reduction in time for a business secretary. So, at the same, so again, I'd like to point out that the increase in the school spending in this budget is one point two seven million dollars. Now, meanwhile, the town as a whole has, our non-education revenues are up six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our home set tax exemption reimbursement is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Business equipment tax exemption is up forty thousand dollars. Our state municipal revenue sharing, which is different than the GPA that we get for the schools, is up fifty thousand dollars, and we're still projecting a valuation growth of forty-nine million dollars based on the ten-year average. We will find out before the next vote on September fifth what that actually came in at, but if you look at the forty-nine million dollars, that will generate at the current projected tax rate, an additional eight hundred and seven thousand dollars in new tax revenue. Taken together, this additional revenue totals one point six eight million dollars, which more than makes up for the one point two seven million, the school board is, excuse me, the school spend is increased.
Thank you. Council St. Clair.
I wasn't going to say anything, but changed my mind. I have to say a couple of things, actually, three things. One, it's really frustrating to, as frustrating as it is for people to stand at the podium, it's almost as frustrating for us to sit here and not be able to respond to some of the things that you're saying. It's extremely frustrating to hear that people think that we're unaccessible, or that we're hiding things, or that we're not there for you. Ask my kids how much they've seen me this summer. I personally have held three roundtables with other counselors on our own time, on our own dime, to help inform the public, to get your feedback, to try to improve communications. This council itself has stepped up their communication process. So, it's really frustrating when I see people come up and say that things, things about us that we're still unapproachable, or that they're not getting the information they need. I'm on the, my cellphone is attached to my hip. I have constituents call me every day up until ten o'clock at night. We answer the phone. That's our job. This is supposed to be a part-time, 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 part-time job. It's a full-time, it's more than a full-time job, and I don't, and I love it. I mean, call me crazy, but I do. I love the residents of this town, even when they get up and say things that aren't so kind about me. The sign ordinance, the only reason I'm going to speak to it in regards to the budget is that it's very frustrating to work on something that you think is an improvement to your town and then be told that you have, that you're intentionally doing it to silence voters. It's preposterous. I would never, I mean, especially people that know me would, I can't even, I can't believe that people would actually think that there would be people that would sit on this council that would, would create an ordinance to limit people from getting information. It's crazy. Call me crazy, that's fine, but that's, that was in no way, shape, or form the intention of the three people and the, and the person who sits as the, I'm sorry, I'm flustered.
Alternate.
Alternate, or the assistant town manager, or Jay Chase. That was not the intention of anyone. That came, actually started from complaints from residents who were upset about the signs that were being posted all over town. So, that started out as a very innocent process, and if it got too convoluted, then okay, we have to step back and reevaluate, but that's why we have the process that we have in this town. But you have to give us a chance to have that process. And I understand that feelings, people, there's not a lot of trust right now, I get it. Trust me, I've been doing this for almost six years, I get it, I see it, and in some ways, I understand it. But reach out, don't try to shame us. I personally have never shamed a single person in this town, ever, and I've been called some pretty bad things, and I've been shamed repeatedly. As far as cuts that they have made to the school budget, because I am going to support this budget tonight, I mean, it's not perfect, it's not where I want to see our overall tax increase, but as I keep telling residents, we have an incredible new superintendent who came in and is working very hard with a very, very, very credible school board. You've got to give her a chance. She walked into a landmine. It's her first year. I, I can only hope that next year, I know next year will be different. We're already working with ideas from residents on how we're going to make it different. A girl yesterday, one of the cuts that was made to the, to the, to the athletic department is a concussion specialist, I believe, that was one of the things I heard, and she suffered a concussion yesterday, second day of preseason, and now she's out for three weeks, and there was nobody at the school. They had to go to the ER. So, you may look at these, these cuts, and you may say they're trivial cuts, they're token cuts. These are not token cuts, these are affecting our children. They're affecting my children, and so they might not be affecting your children. Maybe you don't have kids that go to school anymore. I do, and I'm living on an incredibly fixed income. I'm a single mother, so I understand that side of it. But I also am asking you, begging you, I'm not ashamed to say, to help us get this budget passed so that we can focus and move on and put this town back together and focus on next year. Please. That's it.
Other counselors. Counselor Hayes.
Yeah, I think, oh, I'm sorry. Maybe take a little different direction. I think I'm going to support the budget tonight, and part of that is because, and I think you've kind of heard it from the podium, this has really been a tough year for us. We have really worked hard to try to find a different way of working through the budget process, but I think it was said best, I don't think where we are right now is about the numbers. Fifty thousand, as people have said, is not a lot of money. But what is important, and what I did see, and what I hope you'll hear a little bit in the conversation later tonight and some of the things we're talking about, and we are listening to what folks are saying, we've heard it tonight, people are really now looking forward to what are we going to do next year and the years after that. We have some challenging years coming. I think we are committed to trying to find a budget process. None of us want to be here again next year, so I really hope you'll work with us and try to get this budget passed so we can start forward looking to next year, because as you've already heard, we know next year is going to be as equally as challenging as this year. It, the numbers are going to be, and we need to have a different way we as a community can come together and make the choices we need to make as a community and what we need to do. So, again, I think it's more about the culture. I think it's more about how are we going to put a process in place that we can hear everybody's voice and make the decisions for the community that are the right decisions? So, I'm hoping for your support to get this budget passed so we can move forward, and I hope, we had a joint workshop our last session where we talked about it, and I think everybody on the council at least is acknowledging that there is, we should look at maybe different ways that we can do it and get different input to get to a different place next year, and I take that as a real positive sign. So, thank you.
Counsel Kaza.
So, I won't, I know we're pressed for time. I'll stick to the initial comments I made at first reading, and I'll just simply say I know it's not a great budget for anybody, but let's put it aside, and let's just do, let's get through this process and start the healing process with town, please. We're getting to the point now where we're starting to split hairs, and we're getting past the point of really impacting the actual fiscal budget itself. So, you know, we, to Counselor Hayes's point, you know, we have mechanisms in place to get feedback, we'll utilize those, we'll listen to people, we'll try and improve the process, we should always be trying to do that, but let's stop being vindictive, let's move forward and do the best thing that's right for the town, and let's pass this budget, and so we can move on and start fixing the structural changes and not arguing over the financials of the budget.
Counsel Foley.
I'll try to be brief as well, but I do have a few things to say. You know, I think we're all tired. I think that's pretty clear, and I think an argument could be made on either side that people got tired, they weren't paying attention, and they didn't show up. Eighty-three votes is a small margin. I did not support the budget at first reading, the fifty thousand cut, because the way I looked at it was, does this help us or hurt us? And for me, if I have to go into the budget at this point in this level, then it should really be about how am I using this opportunity to set us up for a better cycle next year? Cutting fifty thousand dollars doesn't do it to me. So, I would rather take the heat as a counselor and put the same budget back out to you and hope we can get those eighty-three people out to pass the budget, because I do want to pass a budget, but it does hurt the schools, and they aren't token cuts. And I'm going to support the budget tonight, though, as I said, I reserved the option to change my mind, because I want to support my fellow counselors in our work, I want the town to come together and start to heal, but I do think we have to think about process improvement and have real honest conversations about that. You know, the analogy I was thinking of was, I work in real estate, so when you price a home, and sometimes, believe it or not, someone thinks their home might be worth more than you think it might be worth, and so they want to price their home at a certain level, and thirty days goes by, and they haven't sold their home, and they look at you and go, "Well, jeez, why isn't my home sold?" Well, let's take a look back at the pricing and what we did to, you know, attract some buyers here, and they want to knock it down. Okay, well, okay, instead of four hundred thousand, we're going to go to three hundred ninety-nine. I'm not going to change their situation, and that's kind of how I feel about the fifty thousand. I don't feel like it's about the numbers anymore. I will support it tonight, again, because I do want to pass the budget. If the budget passes by twenty, I'm not going to be, you know, well, no, I will be happy, but I'm not going to be feeling great about it, I guess is what I'm saying. I'm really, where other folks are, trying to think about what we can do differently going forward to bring more people together, because I think this has to stop. Thanks.
Counsel Donovan.
You know, I really respect Counselor Rowan. He gets into the weeds, he does his homework, he can tell you what is real and what's not real about this, and I've tried to follow that lead sometimes, but I'm not going to tonight. This was a good budget from the, this was a good budget from the beginning. It was unanimous by the town council at the beginning, and we don't always agree, we have different perspectives. It's a two percent, two point eight percent cost increase. That's all I'm going to say about it. I mean, that's, that's an extraordinarily strong budget to limit your cost increase to that. But that really doesn't speak to the importance- But that really doesn't speak to the importance of funding education, which I don't think we've heard enough about, and I didn't really, and I don't really have the words to, to explain how I feel about that. And I wanted advice from a truly great leader, a truly great educator, and given the news of the day, I wanted the words from somebody who had lived his life in Charlottesville, Virginia. And you know who I am quoting. "An enlightened citizenry is indispensable for the proper functioning of a republic. Self-government is not possible unless the citizens are educated sufficiently to enable them to exercise oversight. It is therefore imperative that the nation see to it that a suitable education be provided for all its citizens." Thomas Jefferson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Couple items I wanted to bring up, one is to explain at least for some comments that were made by the public, and there was a reference to budgeting around a particular position. I hope that the citizens understand that when we budget for a position, we budget all costs out, meaning that we budget for full-time employment based on a hundred percent in the entire year, even though they may be actually hired, you know, two months into the fiscal year or a half year, but we have to budget because you don't know the cycle in which you're hiring, unless it's intentional. And you're also, you're also budgeting for the maximum on the health insurance side, so that seventy thousand dollar position, if I, if I remember my numbers right, about twenty-three thousand of that is health insurance alone, which might not be the real cost, but we have to budget it because we don't know what the applicant's going to bring to the workforce and what they're going to require for health insurance. So keep in mind that the real position was forty-seven thousand dollar salary with a twenty-three thousand dollar actual health insurance package, which might have been actually less. That's what you have to do and budget, that's no different in business, you do it on that basis. Again, unless you intentionally know that you're only going to fund it for a half a year or three quarters, we've done that on the town side, particularly on the fire department and police department hires. So I wanted people to understand that piece. The other piece is that, you know, even though this is about the school budget, I look at it from the total, the budget as a whole and the total impact of the town. For the last three years, the total increases have been two point seven-six percent, two point five-five, and two point three-five. The average is two point five-three, and the stated goal, the council has been at or below three percent. This year, we're at two point nine-one, and we're still consistent with that. And I think that if we sit back and stop looking at everything from a negative perspective and looking at it from an added value perspective, and look at what we have in this community, not just the greatness of our school system, but everything else that we have, our beaches, our public works, how great public works is during the wintertime and the snow plowing, and the things that they add to the value of our life and the value of our property, I think that generally speaking, that this, that this community can support a two point nine-one percent increase in their taxes. The tough part of this job is balancing the needs of everyone and finding compromise. If everyone sat up here and had the opinion that I'm just going to stick to my own principles, and I'm not willing to compromise, and I'm not willing to talk about what we really need to do, we're never going to accomplish anything in this community. And I want to say thank you to the council members as well as to the school members, because we've done a great job at finding that level of compromise over the years, and we are getting better at it. We can always get better, and we will, and we'll find new ways of doing it. I don't want that to, anyone to believe that we've done anything wrong in the process up to this point. I think if any, if anything, the only criticism I have about the process is that I thought we had all agreed at the beginning of this fiscal year and this fiscal cycle that we were not going to rely on the, on the state providing us any funding, and that we recognized we would be at minimal receivership, but then when the state came in and gave another one hundred and sixty million dollars, we all kind of ran frantically, or at least in our heads, thinking that we were going to actually get more money. And lo and behold, even though the legislature said, well, we can't change the formula, they changed the formula, and we still get no more money, or at least we're still at minimal receivership. So I hope that if anything, the one lesson we learned is that next year we go into this process knowing that we cannot rely on state educational funding from the state at, at the level, and that we need to do better at long-term forecasting, and when I say long-term, I'm talking three years, forecasting and the other pieces that we have all said that we will, you know, give some credibility to and some discussion, and I hope that the chair of the finance committee brings that up very quickly, because there are several recommendations, and we've made a commitment at the committee level to support that conversation. I also wanted to mention around our own processes that I think Counsel St. Clair was generous in mentioning, there was even more. We have become more open in the committee process, the finance committee of the council and the finance committee of the joint council and town and school board have been open forums in which citizens can come in and speak. I remember years in which those were completely closed and no one spoke at those committee meetings, because that's just the way this town was back in those days. So, and by the way, even when people are there, people don't get up and speak. And so while we provide that opportunity, it also requires citizens to take the initiative and to be at those meetings and be willing to get up and talk to us, not simply write a blog that criticizes us, because it isn't just about those who are being shamed and blamed because they don't support the school, it's also about them shaming and blaming at us when we do support the schools. And it's about trying to find that balance, and we're working, I think, very hard at doing that. I think we will find a compromise, and I think that this current request is that compromise. So I think that we can move this forward, I hope that we learn some lessons and that we take those back and we change that process. So with that, if there's any other comments by council?
Oh.
Yes?
So on the, on the tail end of that and about the communications, we are actually having a budget roundtable at the end of the month. It's like, it's the last Wednesday in August, or, no, the twenty-third, August twenty-third. It is a roundtable focused solely on the budget and the budget process, for all residents of Scarborough. We've had three roundtables in the past, they've been open to the public, and they are just, those were just come and speak as you will, they were attended really well, but this budget roundtable will be solely focused on just the budget and the process. So, and that's open to the public.
Thank you. Counsel Hayes?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a comment later on when we have another agenda item, but the chair is kind of open. We are going to have a finance committee meeting, a town, a town finance committee meeting on the thirty-first at 6:00 PM. Part of that agenda will be some of talking about some of the things that we have heard about, how can we start to look at some financial modeling, some debt modeling, and also start talking a little bit about the process and other things that we've talked about tonight. So we are taking steps to kind of take your comments back and try to blend it into something that gets us to a different place next year. So just thought I'd share that with everybody that's interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Not seeing any, but, not seeing any, it is a roll call vote, and if the clerk would do a roll call.
Counsel Kiazler?
Yes.
Counsel Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel St. Clair?
Yes.
Counsel Foley?
Yes.
Counsel Rowan?
Yes.
Counsel Donovan?
Yes.
Chairman Beba?
Yes, and that is unanimous, thank you. Given the crowd, I would like to maybe recommend that we take a brief recess to allow those who don't wish to continue on, so if we can all be back to you?
They all want to stay.
Excuse me?
I said they all want to stay.
If we can all be back here in about three minutes, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. You can all take your seats.
Obviously, we're pretty full of agenda.
Thank you.
You know.
Moving on to new business, order number seventeen dash oh seventy-five. It's a first reading referred to the planning board on the proposed amendment to the second contract zoning agreement between the town of Scarborough and Bob Jettis and Lucinda Malbon. And if I could turn that over to Karen. I'm sorry, Karen.
It's a little late tonight, huh?
I know better than that, Ms. Martin, thank you.
Karen Martin with the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. I'm here tonight bringing you a request from the owners of the Scarborough Day Spa to amend their existing contract zone. They are at three eleven Beechridge Road, they've been operating a day spa there for, since the late nineteen nineties. When they went in, they did have to do a contract zone. The contract zone language in nineteen ninety-seven was extremely specific, and one of the things that the owners would like to do is they would like to add hair care to their services. Right now, they do skin and nails. Normally, you wouldn't think we'd need to do an amendment for something like that, but indeed, the language is very specific, so the purpose of this amendment tonight is to add hair care as a offered service at the Scarborough Day Spa. They are not doing any renovations, they're not doing any change of facilities, the number of employees that are designated in the contract zone are still valid for them, the only change is adding hair care to the services.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen?
Karen, yeah, I think you already know what I'm going to say, don't you? Do you? How many times has she, has she been in front of us? Do you know? I mean, I think it was only a couple of years ago. I'm, I'm happy to see that it's not a change to the building and it's not a change to any of the other things, because I probably, I'm not a hundred percent sure I would support that at this point. I remember Counselor Holbrook, she came, you know, before. This is a different, actually, business? I understand that, I do understand that. I'm just saying, it just, that, I feel like every other year, we're, we're tweaking and making changes, and that's a good thing for a business. I mean, businesses have to grow, so I'm very understanding of that, but it's like, as soon as I saw this on the agenda, it's like I could hear Jessica Holbrook in my ear saying, and I remember her saying as chair, okay, let's not do this, let's get, make sure we get this finalized, because we don't want to have to keep making changes over and over again. Right. And just to be, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear, we were talking about a different business and a different property. Right. This is a separate, completely, totally unrelated, different business owner than that. It was Lucinda's on Beechridge. Lucinda on Beechridge, right. Right, yes, that's who we were talking about three years ago. Okay, I'm sorry, my memory was, it was the place on Pine Point, but I, I certainly get your, I certainly understand that. It just seemed like at the time, there was so much confusion around it, and I remember the chair at the time being concerned that if this was going to come back before us again, and I'm happy to see, my point is, I'm happy to see that it's not anything to the existing building, and even though we always want to see growth in Scarborough, that is a highly residential area where she is, and so that was my concern when I first read it, and I'm happy to hear your update, that is not the situation. Correct, they've got a nine point six acre lot. Right. They've been running this spa, again, since the nineteen nineties continuously. This is simply adding some services to the spa. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
This may not necessarily be for, for Ms. Martin, perhaps it's for the town manager or the town clerk. Was there a reason initially for the restriction in the contract zoning to be so specific? Was that, what was the purpose behind that specificity?
I think it was just the way it was proposed at the time.
Okay, so there were no other issues or anything that, that caused that to be worded that way?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, our speculation was, when we talked with the owner, our speculation was, I think they may have pulled that off a state license, a cosmetology license, and that may have been why it was so specific.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, thank you. And is there anybody that would like to speak on the item? You're welcome to come to the podium from the public. No? Okay. Motion from council.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to order number seventeen dash oh seventy-six. Act under the request pursuant to Title twenty-three M R S A three zero two-five and to the requirements of Section Four of Scarborough Street Acceptance Ordinance to accept the right-of-way on Honin Road associated with the Carrier Woods development as depicted in planning board approval documents dated July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, and to authorize the town manager to sign any necessary documents. Before opening the public comments, anything the manager would like to?
Angela Blanchett, town engineer is here, and if you'll permit her, she can provide just a quick introduction to the topic.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yes, it's just a short memo in your packet, it's an existing dead-end street on Muzzy Road, Honin. Recently, Rispera Properties came through the planning board process, and we noticed that the end of Honin has, in fact, a hammerhead, which we use obviously for snow plowing and emergency vehicle turnaround, but it, it's on a easement to the town. So working with Rispera during that process, they were agreeable to transfer that Recently, Rispera Properties came through the planning board process, and we noticed that the end of Honan has, in fact, a hammerhead, which we use obviously for snow plowing and emergency vehicle turnaround, but it's on a easement to the town. So, working with Rispera during that process, they were agreeable to transfer that fully over to the town, so that's what you're seeing in front of you. Also, looking at an easement in addition to that, so that we can push snow beyond that.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
So, I know snow storage and snow removal is a kind of an EPA concern. We're right up against the non-such there. Are there any concerns or issues we need to be aware of for snow storage at the end of Honan Road?
There's no natural resources within designated buffer, I guess, from that area, and it's just a typical dead-end street. So, no, there are no environmental concerns that we saw through that process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any. Is there anybody from the public side would like to speak on the item? Not seeing any. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Any comments or questions from council? Not seeing any, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Order number seventeen dash oh seventy-seven is an act on the request to authorize the town manager to enter into a service agreement with the town of Kennebunk for vehicle maintenance and to sign any and all documents. Like to turn it over to the town manager before public comment.
Yes, this will actually be the fourth community that we are providing some level of vehicle equipment services. As you may recall, we started this venture with the town of Olden Beach, and that relationship has gone very, very well. Since then, we've expanded it to include the towns of Hollis and Wells for their specialty fire apparatus. And that's what this does as well with Kennebunk. It's really specific to their fire apparatus, and we expect we can accomplish this within the existing staff. We don't anticipate it having any undue burden on us, and very pleased to bring it to you this evening.
With that, I'd like to open a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the item? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? Council Kiazow.
So, I apologize, Tom, I didn't hear the, will that require additional staff hiring?
It will not, no.
Okay, okay. And then, the second question I had is, a little bit of clarity, if you could please, on attachment A. I believe it states Scarborough will maintain all associated items such as valves piping, valves piping and electrical, electrical switching systems as needed, and in the very next sentence, it says repair and preventative maintenance may be provided on a case-by-case basis. I was a little confused with that. Is it as needed, or is there a contractor? I'm just reading it the wrong way, I don't know.
Yeah, I apologize for providing the strike through and underlined version, and that was not intended to happen. Essentially, it will be specific to the fire apparatus, but there is kind of the outside opportunity or need for them to have other services. And we'll do those on a case-by-case basis, but it really is limited to fire apparatus.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Wave, and it's just a question directed at town manager. So, the other contracts, have we done sort of a return on investment or some type of financial, are they, are they a good deal for the town? Bottom line.
I believe so, and I believe Mike Shaw has an analysis report that I can provide to finance, if that is the right venue, or to the full council. But, yes, he would certainly not be recommending us to bring on another community if it was not a successful venture. We know for a fact, we're making something in the order of twelve to fifteen percent profit, if you will, based on the hourly rate that we charge.
I just know sometimes there is unanticipated sort of consequences of things, so if that great experience, that really was Mike's concern.
No, our biggest concern was keeping up with the workflow, and we've been able to regulate that such that we can do it without impacting our first priority, which is taking care of our equipment and the schools.
Great, thank you.
Council St. Clair.
Just a quick question, Tom. The only, after reading through it, the only concern I had was, is it standard, was it standard in our other agreements that it's a six-month for termination, so they can notify us six months? Just seems, six months seems like a long time if there is a potential problem that arises, we'd have to continue to service them for that period of time?
That's been a consistent provision in all of them. I would note the term, I'm trying to line these all up to line up with the fiscal year. So, this initial term will take us from September first to the end of fiscal year. And then, they can be considered and renewed at that point.
Okay. So, you're comfortable with the six months?
At this point, there's certainly not been an issue, and it's consistent with the other three in place.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other council comments? Council Rowan?
So, just a question. So, I assume at the end of the term, then we can reevaluate the rate, if there's an increase necessary.
Yeah, I believe we actually have a built-in, we'll advise them at a certain point of the year. We advise them what the rate will be, they'll make a decision whether they want to continue it.
Any other comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Next item is order number seventeen dash oh seventy-eight. It's an act to submit the referendum question to construct and equip a new public safety building to the November seventh, two thousand and seventeen election. Before public comment, I'd like the manager to provide an overview.
Certainly. We've prepared a referendum question, a ballot question, if you will. This is consistent with requirements of state law in terms of essentially providing a fiscal note associated with what the borrowing would entail. That fiscal note includes advising the public what our current debt load is, or will be at the time the vote is in front of them. The anticipated, of course, issue, the amount of this bond issue and the related interest as well. You'll note, in this calculation, we've also included a couple of other funding sources that bring us to the point of identifying what that total need to borrow is. So, we start with a overall projected budget of twenty-one million, five hundred forty-eight thousand and ninety-five dollars, and that was reviewed with you in workshop. I believe there are members of the ad hoc committee here tonight and can certainly speak to that in better detail. We do have the existing reserve funds of about six hundred and twenty-five thousand, actually slightly more than that, but I want to be conservative, that I propose that we direct toward this project. And we're also, as part of this process, the ad hoc committee has recommended the highest and best uses to sell the existing facility and to use the proceeds of that sale toward this new project. And we have conservatively carried a number of about one-point-four million dollars for that. That brings us to the total borrowing need of nineteen and a half million dollars. There's some other materials that were provided, including the final report, some commentary from the committee's perspective in terms of what they intend to do between now and November seven, and of course, the budget as well. Again, there are members here that can certainly speak to the particulars of this project better than I, but I'll do my best to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any, so with that, I'd like to open up public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any, I'll close the public comment. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Comments and questions, Council Kiazow?
So, I'm, obviously, support the project, hands down. It's clear need here. I'm a little concerned about the compressed time schedule between now and November, more specifically because we've also got comprehensive planning, we're asking the public to do a lot of stuff with that. And then, in addition to the very aggressive outreach, which I think is important and necessary of this committee, I'm just concerned that we might be running into a little bit of fatigue, if you will, from the public of all this involvement. So, the question I would have to the manager, if I could, if it doesn't make the November ballot, what's the next, what's the next possibility, and what does that do to the project overall?
Well, the next possibility, unless there's a special election, that you would call for this purpose or another purpose, would be the June primary. And I think speaking, and many of us were part of a conversation, and certainly Councilors St. Clair and Hayes can speak to it, I think there's a concern that the momentum will be lost, and we'll have to rebuild that. And frankly, there can be some challenging items on that June ballot, and it's probably best to advance the dynamics in the committee, or not likely to change significantly between now and June. So, I think it was the collective opinion that this is the best time to move it forward right now.
Can I address that also?
Council player?
Oh, do you want to meet, you want to go first? Me? We actually, this was, that was actually a concern that I had. We held, we actually held a meeting with the chiefs and Kevin Freeman and the town manager to talk about whether it was a good plan to put this on the November ballot or not, because I shared those very similar concerns. And after speaking with the chiefs and with Kevin, it was very obvious that it should be on that November fourth ballot. There's actually a lot of reasons why, construction costs, percentage rates, interest rates. I mean, there's a slew of things, having to do also with the council committee members themselves. That committee is made up of an incredible group of people that have a wealth of knowledge, and they felt very strongly that this should be on that ballot because of timeframes. Not so much needing to be out of the existing building, because quite frankly, these guys have been living that way for quite a while. But more having to do with construction of the new building, ground, I mean, there was a huge, long list of reasons why we really need to get this going and moved. I mean, ideally, obviously, coming off of, you know, the losses at the election, I mean, those are, this doesn't give everyone a warm, fuzzy feeling, but I don't think, and we've talked about this, I don't think that this town isn't willing to spend the money. I think there are other issues at play, and unfortunately, the schools have been taking the hit for that. But, I was, I did go into it very concerned, and was almost pushing to move it to June, and came out of that meeting after being, after meeting with the chiefs and Kevin, feeling extremely strongly about getting this on that ballot.
Council Rowan?
So, we heard Carol Rancourt speak from the podium at general comment at the beginning of the meeting, and I just wanted to convey the sentiment of the fifty-five-plus advisory committee when this was discussed yesterday morning. There was a very strong feeling that they would really like to see that building serve as an interim senior center or community center. There's just, I enjoy spending time with that committee, because I learned a lot about the town history that happened before I moved here. And Bud Hansen was present, Hanson was present, and he was filling me in on what happened in two thousand and one. And at the time, there was a referendum question on the table. I think it was, he said it was a five-point-seven, and I'm relaying second-hand information, but he said in two thousand and one, we had a vote for a five-point-seven million dollar senior center. Carol interjected that, you know, and at the time of the vote, there was also discussion about maybe a why it was going to come to town. I think there was something about Piper Shore, but I missed a little bit of it. And, so the net is that, I guess, could we speak to the suitability of the site if it were to be reused? Because the, you know, if we were to hold on to the asset, we could always sell it later. You know, other thoughts that I had was maybe we could split the questions to say, hey, you know, turn it into two questions on the ballot, say the funds, and then would you sell, sell the building and use the proceeds for it? It also, you know, my understanding is this is a single read, so we have to, whatever we do, we've got to take action tonight. I assume there's some kind of calendar that we would be working under to get onto the November ballot. So, I apologize for the lateness and my lack of footwork since yesterday morning, but...
Mr. Here, can I address that?
Several questions, all at once.
I can, I can address your, and I'm probably stepping on your toes again. I know that Angela Blanchett actually looked at, I believe, and I don't want to speak for you, or maybe it wasn't you, okay. Where the police station is centered now is extreme, part of the reason we need to move is it's extremely difficult to access. So, one of the reasons why there was a major concern about putting any kind of senior facility in that, or any kind of facility, town facility in that building, was because of access. Even with lights and sirens, our vehicles have a difficult time sometimes getting into Route One through route on traffic. So, talking about putting a senior center in there was a concern because of traffic. Two, I think they took what they believed a senior center would require, and they tried to basically put it on top of, am I right? Yeah. On top of the existing building, and it just was, number one, there's not enough parking, so it was a no-go. There wasn't enough parking, there wasn't enough space in the building that outfit alone would be probably more than what the building would be worth for us to outfit it for a senior center. So, they actually did really try to do that, because obviously, we want that. So, that building was deemed not feasible to be used for a senior center. And then, the reason, there's a lot more reasons behind it, and I can get you the paperwork for it if you'd like to share that with that group. I would be hesitant, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I'd be hesitant to break off any of that question, because I think then you're messing with the P D Fire Station, and it start, not that voters get confused, but you really have to have a very, it's very direct what you have to have on a ballot. So, I'm not exactly sure how we would be able to word that. As far as using the money from the sale towards a senior center, I don't know how that would work, so. But I do know that there was a very strong effort made to try to put a senior center in that building.
So, if I could, I'd just like to expand. So, the thought there was this would be an interim, and we'd be better off than we are today. Like, understanding that this is not an ideal space, we wouldn't necessarily want to invest a lot of money into, you know, retrofitting the building toward a permanent senior center, which might have been what the analysis was. It was more just a recognition of, you know, there were problems with Wentworth, one of which being parking in space and distance for walking. At Martin's Point, there's also, there's much less parking than would be at the fire station. There's also a space limitation. I mean, they really, it's been incredibly successful to have Martin's Point, and we're so appreciative for what they're offering, but it's been a victim of its own success in that Wednesdays, they've got sixty people coming to the lunch on Wednesday, and they had to turn away a busload from the Veteran Center, because they just couldn't accommodate them.
And the only real red flag I would see, and Tom, obviously, Sean probably can speak better to this, if you were to use a building, from my construction experience, in the interim, you run into insurance issues, and I don't know how that would, I don't know how that would actually work. So, I can't really, it would be hard for me to address that, you'd have to get that from Tom and Sean, I think.
I will say, the ad hoc committee, one of the tasks given to them was to evaluate the current facility and make recommendations, which they have, and that's before you. There was a subcommittee, I participated somewhat, Judy Roy was on it, Kevin Freeman and Karen Martin and myself, I think. That committee looked at the long-range facility plan, and didn't limit their consideration to a senior center. They looked at what are the future needs, and can this building and/or site accommodate any of those? And to add a little clarity to Council St. Clair's point, I don't recall that a senior center specifically was considered, but we're looking at a community center, which presumably, a portion of which would cater to the senior community as well. And in that analysis, it was very clear that that site was not suitable for a facility a community this size would require. And I think it was the wisdom and thought of the committee that it's really important to show commitment to the taxpayers, that we're doing whatever we can to get the building cost down, and to be responsible about the budget. I guess the final point in terms of timing, it is time-sensitive, in that if we wish to have this on the November ballot, I would say it's your next council meeting would be the absolute drop-dead date, and I would concur. So, there would be a potential of delaying this, I hate to even mention it, but it cannot go past your next meeting if you wish to have a question of any sort on the November ballot.
Council Donovan?
I support this strongly. The presentation made the case very clearly that the building is needed, that it was also, we tested the committee on affordability and cost efficiency, and I think we were satisfied with their answers. Splitting the question or senior center, I think that case had to be made to the committee. We're way beyond that at this point, and so I wouldn't support that. I really want to say thank you to the committee itself, the consultants, the two chiefs. They really did an excellent job. It was so professionally done. Kevin Freeman, as always, just did a wonderful job of providing that service to the community. I do have a concern about any delay. Interest rates are going to be going up. The cost of construction seems to be also going up, and so I think any delay is going to cost the town on this. So, I think the November ballot seems appropriate.
Council Foley?
I would just say really quickly, I do support this overall. I wouldn't be opposed to waiting one more meeting if it meant Council Rowan could get some questions answered that he needs answered, but I strongly believe it's got to be on a November ballot versus the June ballot, because that's where we'll get a much truer also sense from the community and voice. Is that or good? Bad or good, as we might think our school budgets bring voters out, it's still not, it doesn't come, it fails in comparison to November. But I would wait a week if you wanted.
Counsel Rowan.
So, I think, I want to preference all of my comments to say that I also really strongly support this. I think that we should move ahead and move ahead in November. And I would, I would follow up with, from the town manager's comment a moment ago of the next meeting being the drop dead date. Would anyone see harm in waiting those two weeks just to explore a little bit further? And I really apologize for the lateness of this request coming in. So, the question is, would that, would that do harm for the process if we were to table this until our next meeting?
No, I mean, it's a function of the timing through election laws. That decision would have to be made at your next meeting. There is that opportunity.
Who would do the evaluation beyond where we are?
I think I'd just like, I think I'd just like to ask the question and make sure that the, that all of the options were considered for that use.
We do have a number of the key actors here with us this evening. Is it valuable to have anyone?
I think it, I think it might be, if anyone can add some color to that.
What are you, what are you asking for?
So, I, what I, so specifically, the very strong sentiment of that group of people was that they would like to see an interim facility at that location rather than the building sold and the funds used toward the project. And so, so I guess what I'd like to explore is, one, is that feasible? Two, is it possible to put that out as a second question on the ballot?
Well, I mean, I think I answered...
No, I appreciate, but I understand that I'm coming up here without giving anyone advance notice and putting you on the spot, and I appreciate trying to ask some color. I'd just like to push back and challenge that a little bit if people indulge it.
Could I wait a second? Could I ask the chief, either one or both, if they could come up and maybe add any perspective that might help the counselor with his question?
I guess for my own, could I ask a question first? I understand, understand the, what the former counselor said because I didn't, this was the first I'd heard of it. Are they looking for a place to have their once-a-month suppers, once-a-week events, similar to what they're doing at Martin's Point?
Yeah, so the idea would be that a larger space that could accommodate some of the growing needs, but yeah, that's exactly it.
And I guess my response to that is, the first issue is, we certainly can't move out of the old facility into a new one's belt, so there isn't an interim during construction period when that would work. And then, the new facility does envision a 100-person meeting room that is also going to be community space when it's not being used for training and public meetings. So, it's not outside of the realm of possibilities that there could be a recurring weekly luncheon place that would have seating for 100 people within the new facility to meet that interim need until there is another facility done, which would eliminate having to heat, maintain, and do all the other things that would go forward with keeping the old facility going.
That's a great point.
Makes sense?
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I also think that in the interim, we could certainly explore whether we had the capability of entertaining those folks in the current space until something different happens. My concerns are, and it's already been alluded to, but my concerns really are the access because it's, it's really, really difficult to get in and out of that a lot. And I would be concerned about seniors trying to, trying to navigate that. It's very difficult for our officers that do it every day and for those folks coming in and out that aren't used to it. I would be concerned about that. I'd also be concerned about the, we've deferred maintenance on this building for a long time now, back in 2007, '08, when we were first starting to explore this. And we have not really spent any money on that building since then, and there are some real deficiencies that I think would need to be addressed if we were going to have folks in there.
Thank you. Counsel Foley.
So, just quickly, the other thing that occurred to me as the conversation was taking place is that sometimes that two-week time period is not just about us feeling more comfortable about, but the groups that were liaisons too. So, if it could give Counsel Rowan the opportunity to explain to, or that senior group to understand better why it may not be a good interim piece, that might be helpful too. And it's still, as long as it wouldn't jeopardize our, you know, getting on the November ballot, I would support the two-week time period. Because I think that communication piece and getting people to understand why we make a decision is equally important.
So, before we go up and continue, any more questions for the chiefs? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to at least add a comment about this. So, very supportive of moving this forward. I think that if we need a couple of weeks to make others comfortable, I'm fine with that as long as we do make a decision, have a decision by the next meeting, and would be happy to entertain a table motion after everyone's had a chance to speak. I actually think, Counsel Rowan, that we, even as it is currently drafted, we can still achieve the concerns, or address the concerns that they have by two things. One is that if we involve the Community Services Director's Department in helping them identify an alternative location, I believe they're primarily functioning on their own, but maybe we can offer that services. I would have to go through Tom and his staff to get approval and kind of get help. Second is that, if you think about the timeline, so they're going to start construction, it's going to take, and I don't know, maybe a year to build it. So, it's not like they're automatically going to vacate the building, and then it's going to be something sitting there empty. But I think that the manager, through the process, can negotiate with the sale, a temporary use or a leaseback for a short period of time, since it's only an interim solution. What we're doing is you're just simply delaying the sale of the property, or at least the ownership, taking ownership of the property. It doesn't impact what is being requested here. It's more of a procedural or process issue that the manager would have to take into consideration when he accepts a bid for the sale of it, and when we would transfer it, and how that would happen, where we could still probably use that on an interim basis. I think that, you know, I'd be a little concerned about, definitely about access. I just have, the other day, I was going down Route 1. If it wasn't for me stopping to let the chief out of the driveway, to be able to take a left-hand turn, nobody else would have stopped. And it has to be, and it's going to be no different with the seniors when they're trying to get out of all of those roads, going left and right. So, I do have an access issue for anybody there. But then also, even the condition of the building, if you listen to the presentation, and I don't want anyone to be offended, but with seniors and health issues and the quality of air control and everything else that's in there, I'd be a little nervous. The whole purpose of us moving our staff now is because of those concerns. Why would we then put our seniors in there? But I think there's an interim solution that can be negotiated as part of the sale. Counsel Kiazow.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I hear the, I hear the comment and the need to acknowledge their concerns, but at this point, I mean, unless they're going to, you know, come before the committee and plead their case as to why they think it's the right thing to do, it sounds like the committee's already explored it, and I don't know what that extra two weeks is going to do other than potentially put us in a tight restriction. I don't know how that's going to affect our ultimate decision. If it's just a question of, it's got to go out of the bond. If we're going to count 1.4 million towards the bond number, we have to be clear about that. So, I guess my question would be, I don't know what we hope to accomplish with that. If it's just communicating and telling them why we're doing it, I think we could accomplish that and still get the bond out because it's not going to change our decision, if you know what I mean? I don't think, but that's just, that's just me. I can, if the will of counsel is to table, I can, I can table, but I just wonder what we're going to accomplish with that.
Counsel Donovan.
Yeah, I think the explanation from the two chiefs that there will be 100-seat space available is something that was not known. And that as an explanation would, I think, quite satisfy, because it's going to be first-class space. It'll be, it'll be very suitable for them. And as soon as the space is available, and therefore, we can accomplish exactly what Counsel Rowan's suggesting, with better space. So, I would say that, at this point, the explanation has been made. It's a good one, and would be accepted by that, that committee.
It just may be of interest to counsel. I've been thinking, should this get on the ballot in the past in November, I believe I would be before you fairly quickly to get authorization to sell, market and sell that building, really so we can get some certainty around what its value is. That will afford an opportunity for some conversation. It's possible with the right buyer. We can have a leaseback provision or delay that acquisition, so there's still opportunity. And I would intend to move very quickly in that regard, obviously respecting what our needs will be in the meantime, but getting certainty around that number is going to be pretty important to us.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
So, a table motion would need majority support, correct? Then can I move that we table for two weeks? And I totally take the feedback of that it sounds pretty infeasible. I just would like the opportunity to go back and express what I learned tonight to that group and make sure that they're still, that they're, that they are supportive of the options that were laid out. I think they're all wonderful. I love the idea of using the 100 space. I think the building might not be completely feasible toward, toward reuse, certainly the location, the maintenance, the heating, all those things I think are strong arguments for, for why this is probably not the best idea. But if it's not harmful, I'd really just appreciate the opportunity of some time, and I do sincerely apologize for making the request, but...
A second is?
Yep. So, the motion and the second is to table order number 17-078 to the September 6th meeting. It's been moved and seconded. It is not debatable. All those in favor? All those opposed? Six to one, thank you. Order number 17-079, Act Regarding Tax Commitment. If a third school budget validation vote fails, and before public comment, I'll turn it over to the manager for an explanation.
You may recall during your last workshop for your last regular meeting, there was some conversation, this issue came up, kind of in the context of what do we do in the event of a failed vote? It does begin to present some operational challenges from a cash flow perspective. And essentially, the two options are to borrow money to get us to a point in the future if we're not able to actually issue tax bills and receive tax revenue, or there is statutory language that allows for us to go to commitment, tax commitment based on the last approved budget by this body. So, in this case, it would be the one that you just approved this evening. That will enable us to stay on our normal schedule, and we would continue in the event of a failed vote to keep working until we ultimately get a voter-validated school budget. But in the meantime, we will have issued tax bills and have moved forward with the operational end of things. So, this is kind of the contingency plan. I think we all hope that this doesn't need to be employed, but it would be great to have it in place so we know we have a path forward.
With that, is there any public comment? Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second. Comments and questions? Counsel Kiazow.
Yeah, I think we covered it pretty well in the, in the work, budget workshop. I think it's the, it's the financially responsible thing to do for the town, and I appreciate the Burns and Shore memorandum in there as well, just kind of validating that we are within the purview to do that. And I think it's, it's the least, we all hope for the best, but we have to plan for the worst, and I think this puts the town in the best position to accommodate whichever the outcome is. If the outcome is positive, then we move forward. If the outcome fails, we still can move forward responsibly, and we still have more time to debate the merits of a further budget if we have to. So, I fully support the measure.
Counsel Rowan.
So, I'm also supportive. I think it's the prudent thing to do. The only thing that I'm concerned about is that, when I read it, it looks like we're tying our hands in that if we have to go out for a rent surrender a fourth time, that we would necessarily be making cuts to the budget in order to do that. And I think that, that essentially, we're tying our hands. I think that the, there is a sentiment in town, or I'm hearing a sentiment in town from a certain population that think that the school budget is way too high. And if we are going to be going after yes votes, I think we need to at least consider that we need to go after the two-low voters on our next round. I think that, you know, you've, we heard Ms. Richter from the podium, Ms. Richter from the podium tonight give the definition of insanity that's often attributed to Albert Einstein, and he may or may not have said that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over. But it's something to consider. And what I would suggest is that perhaps we could amend this to include a provision that, that would also accommodate the fact that we might have to increase, and therefore, the commitment would already be out. So, the idea would be that we would cover that increase out of fund balance and then replenish it in fiscal year 2019 for the surcharges. I don't know if that's feasible.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm having trouble following your budget.
So, when I read...
You raised too much money, right?
So, yeah, when I read this, it says that in the circumstance that, that we raised too much money because in the, in, the budget sales, therefore, we'd have to go out to a fourth vote. But we've already committed based on this budget. And this accommodates the scenario that we would say, okay, well, therefore, we have to cut the budget again. And so, the commitment would be too high. We'd be raising too much money, and therefore, we would be, it accommodates that scenario. What I don't see is the scenario of, we put the commitment in place in September, we have another vote in October, but that vote is for a larger budget. And therefore, what, what happens? Because I don't, I don't see that in, in the reading. And so, I was suggesting some possible language, something that we might be able to do. And I'm, I guess, in the form of a question to the, to the manager of whether or not that's feasible.
I can't answer that. I mean, we're, this is uncharted territory. I'm not aware that any community man has found themselves in this circumstance. That's what our attorneys have said. So, I'm not in a position to give you any advice with how to modify this language tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry. I was thinking.
I think Counsel Rowan was theorizing that the budget might go up. But I think that is such an exceedingly remote condition that to have the certainty of knowing that we can pay our bills by having the assessor set the tax rate is far more important here, given that the chances are, if we had a fourth referendum, it would be a lower budget, not a higher budget. But it certainly wouldn't be a large change either way. So, I would, I'd be inclined to not try to take care of that theoretical contingency.
Counsel Rowan.
So, I guess my response would be, I agree with Counsel Doneman, and we can cross the bridge, and if we need to do something, we can figure that out.
True.
At a later date. This is on our hand.
Counsel controls use of fund balance, so if you find yourself needing and wanting to use fund balance for a particular purpose, you can choose to do that at any point.
Great. So, we don't need to change it now. I support this.
Counsel Hayes.
Just a quick comment. I support setting it now and doing it, because the other alternative, which is borrowing money, which we did talk about, that has some consequences too. I mean, there's interest costs that won't be insignificant to, it could possibly impact bond rating numbers, and as we talk about the new fire station, that could have a real impact. So, I think it's the prudent thing. I totally agree it's a prudent thing to do. That's our backup plan. It makes a lot of sense, so I support it.
Other comments?
I just want to mention, so, the only concern I have is we need to be prepared for that what-if, and that is because if we set this rate, which I totally agree with, and then it fails, and we come back and we have, then have to do another reduction, the citizens receiving tax bills will be confused, and some will be upset the fact, by the fact that they have overpaid and will have some expectation of either a refund in the current year or some process in which they can access that. Most of them might only have a very small impact, and it might not be that significant. But there are some properties, when you take a penny and tend to buy the value and put it through that calculation for some, that those are pretty large overpayments. And I just want staff and us to be prepared to have that conversation about what we're going to do in that case. Now, I hope that everyone votes for this budget, and this is a precautionary tale, but I want us to be acknowledging, acknowledging today that we will need to have something in place to meet that demand if something should happen, so...
Let me be very clear. State law does not allow a community to commit taxes more than once, so we'll do it once. And this, paragraph three was added really to add clarity for you and for the public that in the event of that circumstance, what would we do with the extra money? We're raising by taxes that don't need to fund operations, and the effect of that is it goes to fund balance.
With that, anybody else? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Order number 17-080, Act to Create an Ad Hoc Budget Advisory Committee. Before public comment, would Counsel Foley like to make any introductions since she is the author of the... is the author of the resolution?
Yes. Are you going to read the whole piece, or do I need to read the whole piece?
Yeah, I wouldn't read the whole piece now because you'll do that as part of the motion.
Okay.
So if you can just summarize it for the public, because they can speak to it.
Okay. So if anyone's ever, ever came to my classroom when I was a teacher, or came to my home office now, I have quotations all over the place. It's something that I just get inspired by daily, and this one struck me as appropriate for this particular proposal. To get where you want to be, sometimes you have to be willing to do something you are afraid to do, and do something that you've never done. Don't let those fears get in the way of your potential. So it was kind of in the spirit of that quote that I felt putting this resolution into action was important. And while I know it caught some of my fellow counselors and some other folks off guard in terms of timing, I also felt it was prudent to demonstrate a willingness by the council that, you know, it's not just lip service. We are hearing people, and we are taking action, are willing to take action to make some changes to the way we do business. I do think there's been continual improvement all along. So the basic crux of the resolution and proposal is to put together an ad hoc advisory committee that would be made up of council members, school board members, members of the public, that represented as diverse a group as we can get, folks who are part of the tax group, if you will, and folks that may be part of a schools group, if you will. And really try to get everybody working in the same direction so that next year, even though we'll still have some differences, we may be able to see each other in a little bit more common ground. So that's really my goal. I also just wanted to personally have a more active role and voice in the process. So I think that's it. And you're going to read this piece and then start the conversation, or how do you?
Well, I'm going to open up the public comment first.
Yes.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Larry Hartwell, nine Pierd and Drive. I have no prepared remarks for this, but I think certainly a dialogue is certainly better than a monologue. And you don't get changed without talking to one another. So I think the concept is good, and we ought to give it a try.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, Sarah Mullin, 55 Gunstock Road. Could, and I know this is not supposed to be a dialogue, but I'm just going to do this anyway, could somebody explain how this would actually, like what that means, ad hoc advisory council or committee, whatever it's called, and how that would work in the budget process in the future if it passes? Thanks.
Absolutely. So I can at least address how the council rules deal with ad hoc. And then it kind of depends on what happens next with this. But council rules indicate that an ad hoc committee can be created by the council in which members are named to that committee, and that each of the ad hoc committees then have a time-specific range. So there will be a start date and a date included in that. And then if they need to be extended, just as we did recently regarding the public safety building, that can actually then be extended at a later date if there needs to be additional work. The premise of this, if I can summarize for the counselor, is that the committee will be charged with a purpose that outlines establishing baseline of facts and information. It's been suggested in the membership that there will be two town counselors representing the finance and communications committee, one school board member, preferably from the school finance committee, one member of Save Our Schools group, one member of Smart Taxes group, and four additional members to be selected through an open application process. Then the other pieces are more formalities about quorums and official meetings and minutes and kind of things that need to be included as part of that. And then that committee would then have its work before it based upon what's in the purpose statement. There are five bullets within the purpose statement. It establishes a baseline of facts regarding the cost associated with the delivery of current and historical service levels by benchmarking Scarborough's costs to those and other communities, identify common goals among all Scarborough stakeholders, consider ways to improve the current budget process, develop suggested outreach and communication strategies, provide ongoing feedback and support to the joint finance committee throughout the budget process. So those are the five charges and purpose statements that are in there.
Sorry, this is so weird. Do I have to say my name again?
No.
Okay. I don't know, I'm a stickler for rules. So one other procedural question. Is this what's going to vote, you're voting now and then it's happening, or you're voting now to then consider it later? It seems, and this, I guess, is just a comment, as someone who's been very involved in this, it sounds like specific groups are mentioned, and they're not necessarily named properly, perhaps. And it would be nice to be able to, as a member of one of the groups that I think was intended to be included there, it'd be nice for us to be able to give feedback as a group thoughtfully about what I think, and speaking just for myself, I do think dialogue is a great idea, but there, I don't think right now I can speak very well about whether this is a good idea, specifically about like how it's been outlined beyond yes, agreed, dialogue's a good idea. So is there a way to have an opportunity to think about it and then provide comment beyond just right this minute? And I know I'm not going to ask you questions.
Nope. It's been a long night. Our action is to approve the committee. So if we take this up and we vote yes, it is, the committee will be formed based on the membership that was listed. So our action tonight now...
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Some of your questions may be answered through our conversation, I'm guessing, because I do have some additional comments to share that may help clear that up for you, I'm hoping.
Any other public comments?
Susan Hamel, Three Bay Street. I'm very pleased to see this on the agenda. I'm optimistic that this committee could get to work and have some impact. And just cheers for creating a committee, and let's roll up our sleeves. Thanks.
Ben Howard, Seven Windsor Pines. Again, I think it's a great idea. Definitely, having gotten up and spoken on a number of issues, it's tough to present your idea in an informative way in just three minutes. It's even tougher to not allow people to ask you questions back. So the idea to sort of get the groups that have done a lot of research and spent a lot of time, their personal time into one room and discussing, I think it's a great idea, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sorry, Hillary Dergan, Sequoia Lane. This is a question, which I know I'm not supposed to do, but after you guys discuss it, then we don't have another opportunity to say anything.
Correct.
So you said there would be four other members. Who picks those members? Sorry.
Usually Tom.
So I think, right.
I guess, I like the, I mean, I don't have any problem with dialogue, but none of us, I guess I would just like to know more about it before I can make an informed statement.
Right. So what I would like to do is, after public comment, is to have a conversation with the council. And I think that that will answer it. And of course, our emails, based upon everyone's email communications lately. I know that you can definitely get in touch with us if you have more comments and questions. So I'd like to, if there's any other comments from the public, then I'd like to move to close those comments and then have us talk about this. So not seeing any, we'll close the public comment. Is there, if Council Foley, if you could read the motion as a motion, or read the resolution as a motion?
Both pages? The whole thing? Okay. So be it resolved by the council of the town of Scarborough, Maine, and town council assembled that whereas the town and budget, town and budget, school budgets affect every person in the town of Scarborough, and whereas the school budget validation vote has failed with the voters of Scarborough repeatedly in recent years, and whereas residents have been clear in their interest to better understand the process used to generate town and school budgets, and in their desire to have clearer channels to communicate with the town council regarding budgets, and whereas the town council form of government is a representational form of government that allows for citizen advisory groups to inform its decision-making, and whereas in an effort to identify strategies for improving communications and outreach regarding the budget process, and to create an opportunity for a diverse citizen group to report to the council on a balanced approach to meet the above-mentioned challenges. Now therefore be it resolved by the Scarborough Town Council, in-town council assembled that that there is hereby an ad hoc budget advisory committee created, and the membership terms, offices, and duties shall be as follows. Number one, the purpose. The purpose of the budget advisory committee is to advise the town manager and town council on strategies to better promote community understanding of budget processes and support greater acceptance of results of the annual budget process shown by a positive school budget validation vote. The committee will propose improvements to the budget process and will identify additional communication and outreach opportunities. The following is a general overview of the discussion points, expectations, and deliverables the committee should consider in arriving at its recommendations. Establish a baseline of facts regarding the costs associated with the delivery of current and historical service levels by benchmarking Scarborough's costs to those and other communities through available data sets. Identify common goals among all Scarborough stakeholders. Consider ways to improve the current budget process. Develop suggested outreach and communication strategies. And then provide ongoing feedback and support to the joint finance committee throughout the budget process. The committee's powers and duties shall not exceed those prescribed herein or otherwise restricted by town council rules, policies, and charter. Membership. The membership intends to provide fair representation of key stakeholders across age, income, and duration of residency demographics. Members should be sought out who have unique experience in budgeting, accounting, public policy, or community engagement. The committee shall be limited to Scarborough residents and comprised of nine members as follows. Two town counselors representing both the finance and communications committee, one school board member, preferably from the school finance committee, a member of the Save Our Schools group, a member of the Smart Taxes group, four additional members to be selected through an open application process. Although official membership is limited to members, the committee is encouraged to draw upon other resources and invite other key stakeholders to participate in the proceedings as they feel appropriate. The timeframe, the committee shall recommend and report their identified goals and agreed upon deliverables to the town council where the first town council meeting held in December. Upon acceptance and approval of the council, the committee will shift its focus to then meeting those goals and deliverables by continuing to meet, support, and implement the identified activities, events, and outreach throughout the budget season culminating with the June referendum. And a yes vote, I added that. Vacancies and removal. Any vacancies shall be filled by the town council. The town council may remove any member of the committee by vote of a majority of its members for misconduct or non-performance of duty. Officers, the committee shall elect a chair and recording secretary from among its members. The chair shall be counted to determine a quorum and shall have the same rights as other members of the committee, including the right to vote. Quorum and voting. A quorum shall consist of five members. The concurrence of a majority of the members present and voting shall be necessary to decide any question before the committee. Meeting and records. The committee shall meet often enough, at least monthly, to complete its responsibilities within the deadline set, and shall strive to meet bi-monthly on a date and time specified by a vote of the majority of the committee at its first organizational meeting. Other meetings may be called by the chair, provided that the chair shall call a meeting of the committee upon the request of at least three members. The committee shall keep minutes of its meetings and submit them to the town clerk. Okay.
Is there a second? Second. Council Foley.
Peter.
Peter.
So it was great that you asked those questions, because those are a lot of questions a lot of people have. And so I do have something I want to read and offer to my fellow counselors before they engage in conversation, as I haven't had a chance to even get feedback from all of these folks yet. So what I know to be true, and that's become clear to me through some really productive conversations and feedback from others, is that in my eagerness to try to do something I saw is very good for the town, I skipped what is really the most critical step in truly inclusive and collaborative processes and work. And that is that the collaborators themselves need to be involved from step one and not inserted at step two. So they need to be a part of the design. So as written, this resolution solely includes my initial thoughts and ideas, and therefore, I'm not convinced that voting on this tonight is what's necessarily best for us or best for the town. I am convinced that what we do need, that what we need to do needs to be different from what we've done in the past. And my preference would be to convene, if willing and able, the full Board of Education and full council for a workshop to proceed either our September 6th or September 20th meeting to brainstorm and vet out some more of the details, answer some more of those questions around the charge of the committee, the composition, the duration, et cetera. Simply sending this back to just the finance committee or the joint finance committee, as was suggested at our last meeting, to my way of thinking, does not accomplish the goal of doing something different or being inclusive of more voices. So I'm prepared to offer a motion to table this so that more time can be afforded to address some of these questions and concerns that have been raised, to allow more time for other stakeholders to weigh in and give us some feedback, and so that any legal implications of working together in this way can also be clearly understood by both the council and the Board of Education. But before I make that motion to table, I would like to hear what my fellow counselors are thinking around the support of this idea and how we might best move this concept forward. And then I'm going to add one thing, and I'm going to stop. So some of the identified names or space holders, if we got a name wrong, that was honestly a error of timing and editing. I think Tom was gone for two days. He sent me a draft. I looked at it quickly within two hours, because it had to be on Fridays, on the website by Friday. So those things we may not have perfectly put together, but I understand the intent is really trying to think about a variety of people that we could bring together. So I'll...
Comments from council? Council Kiazlo.
So I'll start off with positive comments. I think it's the right intention. I think it's the right idea to get more voices at the table. But I got three kind of real main reasons why I don't think this is the right idea right now and in this form. The first and foremost is I think it attempts to meet a non-existing need. And what I mean by that is, I'll break down the purposes here. So the first one was to advise the town manager and town council on strategies to promote better community understanding of the budget process. I understood that's the charge of the communications committee. So we have a committee that exists that is responsible for that and is taking that under their purview. So I wouldn't want to repeat and duplicate those efforts there. The second one is to support greater acceptance of results of the annual budget process. I think that's why we have the vote for the school budget, and I think that's really the opportunity for the check back of is it the right approach for the town or not? That's really the only hard anecdotal, real, actually, the only hard, real evidence that we have that we can all agree to is certifying the vote at the end of the budget. See, purpose of improvement, purpose is improvements to the budget process. Again, I think that's the purview with the finance committee. I think we've all agreed to take that on. That's kind of really where I think that process should lie, because the budgets are very complex and complicated. And I think we've got, we worked very hard with staff and with specialists to work through that. And in that process, within the process that we currently have, there's public comment at all the finance committee meetings, there is regular public comment at the town council meetings, and to some of the other counselors' points, we're always available. Anybody can call us, send us an email and say, hey, if, you know, the three-minute exchange, granted, is not really the best way to exchange ideas, but I've certainly met with constituents one-on-one, exchanged ideas, had dialogues, had discussions. So I don't necessarily think that we're closed off, and we're not available, and there isn't an ability to approach us and through the existing processes that we have. And the third one was to identify additional communications and outreach opportunities. Again, I think that's why we established the communications committee this year, and I think those are all very important goals, but I think we've kind of met them through, or we can meet them through existing infrastructure and through existing processes that we have now. The second thing is the timing of the motion. We're still operating without an approved operational budget. And I'm not quite sure, while this may address some of the structural issues that we... And I'm not quite sure, while this may address some of the structural issues that we've heard and some of the structural concerns that we have, it doesn't really address any of the fiscal issues associated with the current budget. And I think it's more of a, it's more of a structural issue. So when we developed the Communications Committee and when we changed the purview of the Appointments Committee to the Negotiations Committee, we had several meetings, both within the individual committees and then collectively as a whole. So if we're going to do a process change, which I really think this is, I think we really need to not make it on a snap decision right before a major budget vote. I think it's something that we need to evaluate and review. So I think that's really addressed the timing of the issue of this motion. And the third and final one is really the naming of specific groups in the composition. So as the Chair of the Appointments and Negotiations Committee, who's responsible typically for filling those vacancies in the ad hoc committees and the existing committees, went through and looked and to see if there was really any precedent that we have, either in charter or in existing committees, of really calling out specific non-town-related groups or non-town associated groups like planning or staff members. The only one I could find was the Firing Range Committee. And the reason I think that there's two specialists, if you will, in the Fire Range Committee is really for safety reasons. Two of them have to have special NRA certifications. One is a representative of the Scarborough Gun Club and the other is the member of Scarborough Fishing Game Association. So when we go and, I'm very, very concerned when we call out specific groups regardless of which side they're on because I think for every group that we agree should have a seat at the table, there's probably two or three others that feel they also should be there. And I'd hate to see us in a position where we're picking and choosing who gets to sit. I'd rather see an open forum and an open discussion where anybody, like the communications roundtable, anybody can come and express a concern or an issue or an opinion. And if we start naming specific groups, I think that's a very, it sets a precedent that I think would be very, very difficult to then retract from. So again, I appreciate the motion. I think it gets us going in the right direction. I just don't think that this is the right mechanism for it. And I'd rather see it, if it's structural, see it looked at more from a whole council standpoint with a little bit more time to review it and certainly take it up in finance and see if that's something that we can add value to our process that way.
Counsel Hayes, you had your hand up before to do?
Yeah, and I think, and I guess just process-wise, where we are in this process is Counsel Foley has put out a concept of maybe is this something we want to explore further in maybe a workshop, the concept and try to flush it out more. And I would totally support that. I think, I think this is very consistent with what we've been hearing from the community. And I'll share, you know, Counsel St. Clair and I just were on an ad hoc committee that was for the Public Safety Building. And that was a really, well, really high-performing group. We did have the right individuals at the table. They worked collaboratively. They really came up with some great ideas and some great concepts. So I think as we had talked about, we're all talking about we need a different process to move forward. I'm not quite sure what that process is, but I like the suggestion of taking this as a starting point and then maybe having those conversations about how do we move forward? Where does it sit? Does it sit, as you have suggested, in, where is it? So I would really support committing, at least as a council, to start the conversation, have workshops, explore a concept. This, you know, as Katie said, this may not be the end-all-to-be-all, but it's a starting point. So I'd very much support that conversation.
Counsel Rowan?
Yeah, I think when I first read it, I had similar concerns. I questioned the charge and the duration and the membership and some of the other thoughts that I had is that, you know, a lot of our ad hoc committees turn into permanent committees. And so then you want to think about, you know, term duration. And what we really want to do for something like this is ensure that we have balance on that committee. And I think that was some of the intent around naming folks in the membership. And so I had an opportunity to speak with Counsel Foley and kind of understand some of the motivation. And I really love the concept and like the idea of having more dialogue. It does feel like some of the interactions that we have is kind of one-way and we kind of run that risk of talking past each other. And so I really like the concept of having it as a workshop. And the outcome of that workshop might very well be something very similar to this in which case at least we've had an opportunity to have broad consensus and ideas expressed and included the school board and school administration as well as the other council members. So I love the idea of tabling and turning it over to a workshop.
Counsel St. Clair.
So I also had a chance to talk to a little bit with Counsel Foley about it. A couple of my concerns and one thing that I had asked for and asked her to do, and I would support tabling this and looking at it in a different way, was because I did make a commitment to residents to hold that budget roundtable at the end of the month. And I felt like it was important for me to stick to that and get that feedback. And if we were to create something like this tonight, what am I supposed to do with these people at the end of the month? I kind of would be a waste of their time to come and talk to me about process and procedure when we've already put something in place. So that was a major concern for me. You know, I also have, I do have to pick up on something that Counsel Rowan said. A lot of times ad hoc committees do become full-time committees. And I did have a concern that there wasn't an end date with this ad hoc group. I didn't see an end. There was, I'm sorry.
A yes vote.
Well, right, but yeah.
No guarantee on that.
Right. So anytime there isn't an end date, sometimes it runs into something that we don't necessarily want it to run into. And I'm not saying that that is what would happen here, but we have seen that before. And then it's very hard to stop those committees from doing their good work, so to speak. I am always a proponent of communications. I like to talk. I like to listen to people. I love meetings. I love hearing your perspective. I love talking to residents. That's really the only reason I still continue to do this job. So I love that part of it and I would support tabling it and doing some sort of, I think it just needs some, it needs some fine tuning and some tweaking.
Counsel Donovan?
Yeah, I share the comments made by several people that it needs to be evaluated much more deeply, tabling it, whether it's a workshop or I see the role of the Communications Committee and the Finance Committee as needing to be properly included in this as well as some of the other comments. So I think tabling it at this point is quite appropriate.
Counsel Foley?
So I just wanted to touch on a few things that were brought up. So number one around timing, I totally saw Kate's dilemma and appreciated it. I also thought it was appropriate to try to, again, show action versus just talking about making changes. That actually shows a commitment to making some change. And in my way of thinking, that was going to help get us to yes. So that was part of my motivation. I appreciate what Counsel Kiazlo said about the Communications Committee. However, I feel like something as big as this needs a really focused group, whereas the Communications Committee has just now, you know, finally got their strategic plan draft all together and really they're in charge of, like, I see that as an overall high-level piece, not necessarily focused on every single one issue. And I want, I want this to be, I want there to be no excuses for anyone to say I didn't know this about this. And I know we feel like we did that already, but I want it to be even more flooded. And the other thing I think that is created in doing something like this is that, you know, if you create the local champions, whether people agree or disagree when they leave a committee meeting, they can go back to the folks in their circle and share that information. And then for me, it's kind of like the story of the cold pricklies and the warm fuzzies, you know, it spreads. And so my idea and thought was if we can create those kinds of different champions for the budget in those other areas with a better understanding of the facts that as we know them to be, then getting to yes isn't going to be as big of a fight. So those were all parts of my, again, motivation and intention, understandably not tweak where it is, but this was the process that was available to me in a short amount of time. So I agree it's not the best process. And so I will make a motion to table.
Second.
Jesus. Sorry.
Well, out of the spirit of the motion, thank you for not letting me speak, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Maybe that is actually better. If you don't mind, I'd like to just make one comment.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you.
You'll withdraw your motion.
So I agree with a lot of statements that have been made. I think that the intent is meaningful and I think the purpose is also specific, given the conversations that we have had. I have one glaring problem and that needs to be addressed as part of that workshop. We have left out a significant part of our relationship that we have with the school board because it talks about us, us being the town council. We have more members on the board, on this committee than the school board does. The town council is the one that has to approve the goals and the recommendations. But yet the implications could be extremely significant on the school side without their approval and their partnership. It dismantles a relationship that we've taken a lot of time and effort in building. And I just hope that we take that into consideration when we move this to a workshop of the, of the whole council because that will be a critical part of the supporting this going forward. So with that, I would entertain a motion to table to, I would recommend based on our schedule to the September 20th meeting. So if that's a motion?
That's the motion.
And Counsel Donovan, did you want to second that?
I'm sorry, can I get clarity? The, two things. One, I thought we were talking about a joint workshop. And second, you're tabling the, you're tabling this until the 20th of September? So we have the workshop and then immediately go and have action?
Well, we can schedule a workshop before that. So it'd have to be on the same day? We'd probably have it a week or, we only have here a couple of weeks anyways, but yes.
And then about the joint, was it, were we intended to have a joint?
I think we can talk about that because that's more process than what our expectations are. So we can talk about the composition of the workshop then.
Thank you.
I think we have to keep in mind the school board's schedule when we're talking about a workshop because they also have, yeah.
Yes. So for now, the motion is to table this until the September 20th meeting. And I will talk with everyone, including the school board, about the joint workshop option. That is not debatable. So all those in favor of tabling this until September 20th. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
10 o'clock. Sorry, Tom.
It's 9:58.
I have 9:58.
No, 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 it's 10 o'clock. Sorry, Tom.
It's 9:59 now. So Order Number 17-081, Act to Approve the Town Manager's Recommendation for the Implementation of the Meter Parking Fees for an Executive Summary at Highest Levels, Turn Over to the Town Manager.
Yeah, technically, I don't think this needs council action, but given the interest and some sensitivity around it, I brought it forward at your last meeting and I bring it back to you this evening for your final blessing. I do see value in getting this in place this fall so I can have some midterm experience and we can be in a position in the spring to hit the ground running, so to speak. I'm pleased to go back through the proposal, but in the meantime, perhaps I won't.
And any public comments? Not seeing any. Is there a motion from council?
To move.
Second. Comments and questions, Counsel St. Clair?
Yeah, I don't agree with it.
Okay. Would you like to add to that?
Yeah. I do not like it. I do not want it. I didn't, I, I mean, we can go back two years ago, I didn't want metered parking down there in the first place. I lost that, that battle. That was fine. I'm over it, clearly. I think what you're asking for, and I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but the timing that you're asking for is for like six, starting at 6:00 AM, going till 10? Is that what it says?
Charge fees for the entire time that you're allowed to park there, yes.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion. Can I do that?
Amendment?
I'd like to move approval to modify the town manager's recommendations for metered parking fees to require payment only between the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Um, sorry, Counsel Kiazlo.
No, go ahead. Just Kate first.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I just, I, my concern is that I think we're getting greedy. I'm just going to say it. I think that we have, and I understand that if they are senior citizens, they do not have to pay. What about handicapped? Does handicapped have to pay?
There's no provision otherwise.
No provision for that, okay. So there is a lot of elderly or there's also a lot of people that go down there early in the morning before work to walk their dogs. They're there for half an hour, 20 minutes. They go down, they come back, they leave. I just feel like nine to five, we're, okay, we're stepping it up a level. I feel like if we go from not charging to then charging all 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's just too much at one time. I would like to see this in a stepped motion. Let's see how, what comes from nine to five and then if the council next year, so be it, decides to change that, I may not be here to do anything about it. But at this point, I would like to see it stay nine to five. I apologize.
Counsel Kiazlo.
So I can appreciate Counsel St. Clair's vehement opposition to it and I understand that. I guess I look at it this way, we've, we had a discussion in finance, it's part of the budget, and we have to give the town manager authority to implement those actions. And I do think there are alternative areas for parking. I believe the main lot is still available prior to nine. So I don't think we're restricting necessarily beach access by charging a fee at that point. I think we've empowered the town manager to implement that policy and I would support how he wishes to do that.
So if you don't mind, councilors, I would like to break protocol. I believe a citizen did not hear me say that there was a public hearing and then close it. So if you don't object, I'd like to have her speak if she would like. You're welcome.
We'd like questions, counsel.
I couldn't hear you. So speaking of senior citizens, I'm Jane Wagner, Skirwink Road. I wasn't really prepared to talk, but I would like to address this. I have spoken to a few members of the council. I've written letters. I agree. I thank you for that. I think it is becoming a financial gain maybe that you're seeking. I'm not sure. I'm confused on the reason why you're feeling as though now what used to be a free asset for anybody to come and enjoy an hour of the beach has to be taken away. I question a few other things, like the officers that I see almost every morning that are on the beach when I'm thinking the amount of money we'd maybe pay for them, even though it may be a small portion, how is that going to balance out with that $1 that you're getting for 13 spaces? So I'm just, I'm confused. I haven't gotten a straight answer. I don't live on the beach. I, I'm there often. I love the beach. I was gone, I've moved back. I think it's one of the things, and it's not just that beach. I think our beaches in Scarborough make us the type of community people remember. I mean, it's obvious. Look at the tourists, look at the people that I have heard comments this year and starting last year, they've seen a change. I've noticed a change. I feel animosity when I walk down there now between groups that I never felt in the 60s and the 70s, growing up. I, you know, I know things change. I get it. I'm a mom. I was a teacher. I just think maybe if everybody can get along and I just feel as though the one hour which is being taken, $1 which may be taken and raised up to $2, et cetera, where are we leading? And I just really urge the council to step back and think about it and think, is it really worth stepping that up where maybe we can put some effort in other areas? I don't understand. So I appreciate any, any maybe clarification that I don't seem to get, but there are a lot of people that I've spoken to that have not had a chance to come up or haven't taken it upon themselves, but it'd be really great to kind of maybe meet in the middle somewhere. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Back to council comments, Counsel Foley?
So I was pretty adamantly opposed to the meters in the first place. That's not a big surprise to anybody who knows me. Access is something that I am pretty passionate about. And it's not just for dog walkers. It's for, you know, there's fishermen. I have a friend who likes to go and fish down at the point and in that low tide and just walking all the way down there and casting, he might get two or three casted and now he has, then he has to turn around. then he has to turn around to even do that for in an hour is pretty restrictive, as it is. So I do feel like this is another step towards what people feel as restrictive. That said, the meters are there, and so are the police. So I'm not opposed to meeting in the middle and supporting nine to five. I was, I didn't have time, and I apologize, to go back. I feel like somebody reported out to us about, how many towns do you go and pay for meters? Like, if you go in the city of Portland, after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, the meters are free. So especially that evening time felt over the top restrictive to me. So I'd love to see the morning and the evening still be a free, still restricted to an hour. That seems to have, I've heard from people in the community who, you know, felt like they needed some help and support, that it has made improvement for them. And so, okay, we made some improvement. I don't want to go so far over that, that we sway the pendulum back the other way. So I can meet in the middle and support nine to five. It will bring in some revenue, it'll give us some indication of what we might potentially make. I think 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is a bit over the top.
Council Rowan?
So I was hoping just to ask the manager, he's written his recommendations, that the reason why he's recommending that we charge at all allowable times was for simplicity sake? Are you prepared to speak to the complexity that this would add? Or would you just take that away?
It's not really complexity. I mean, I think there is simplicity to have it applied to all allowable hours. I think it's the simplest way to approach it. Beyond that, given where we are with the enforcement, I don't expect we'll be removing enforcement for those early morning or evening hours. So we're going to have staff there, it's no savings unless the council chooses to have us reduce that presence that currently is there. I expect we would continue that. Thanks.
Sorry, I was looking at some information data. Council Donovan?
I oppose this motion to amend for the obvious reason that it's fundamentally unfair. This whole issue is fairness. What you want to do is not favor one group of people showing up at the beach versus another time. So people from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., they show up, they get off free. The person who doesn't want to get out there, a senior citizen, older person, maybe gets out there at 10:00. Person who works at a job at Hannerford, they have an hour for lunch, that's the only time they can get down there. So they pay. It makes no sense to favor one class or group of people over another. Also, 90% of the tickets that were issued, were issued to out-of-town people. Fundamental fairness says that these people have not contributed to the maintenance of the beach, with all the infrastructure costs that have been put into the beach by the town. It's quite appropriate that they pay and participate in this process. And so that's why I very much appreciate the town manager having favoring Scarborough residents, so that we have revenue contributed largely by out-of-town people, and that we not discriminate in favor of one class or group of people over another.
Council Hayes?
And I guess as kind of a point of clarity, that I think how we got to this discussion, it actually came up in the budget process. And we were actually looking at one of the processes, we were looking at how do we get to our numbers? And we mentioned that, you know, we needed about $8,000 in parking revenue. That's how we got to where we got to. That equates to four or five hours a day. So that's how I got to. We would charge for part of the day, and I thought that was sort of what we were going to come back with a recommendation, saying we were going to put in hours on the meters that equated to approximately getting that $8,000 we wanted for the budget. That was the number, that was the number we're looking for. I certainly have, and I appreciate Councilor Donovan's comments, but I have gotten a lot of emails and a lot of comments about the parking meters at Higgins Beach. It is a contentious issue for our community. And again, I think a compromise of nine to five is a way that it kind of bridges a gap. It's not perfect, and if what we're trying to do is, as Tom has described to the town manager, we want to try, I mean, we've already missed most of the summer for the parking revenue anyway. So I very much support modifying this nine to five. I'm not comfortable going all the whole time six to 10:00.
Council Kiazow?
So if I could please, through the chair, Tom, could you explain what beach pass's impact, or how that would work for beach pass holders, or people who are in town and have those? They wouldn't be charged, correct? Is my understanding?
Certainly, that's always been part of my proposal, that if you purchase a season's beach pass, that would enable you to park free.
At any time.
At any time.
Okay, thank you.
Council Rowan?
So my understanding is that the residents over 60 can have a free season's pass. And I think the other thing that I've noticed, because I work in Portland and often park on the street, oh, I'm sorry. So I work in Portland and I often park on the street. One of the, I feel like the main driver there is that they just, that's when they have their hours of enforcement, that's why they have the parking from 9:00 to 6:00. And if we're going to have staff there to enforce it, I feel like the, given that you get free parking with the beach pass, and it is a matter of fairness that everybody parks their pays unless they have a beach pass, I don't see the point in restricting the hours.
Comments? The only comment I have is that, I agree with the comments around the fairness issue. I do want to mention that, at least from my own consideration, this was not an issue about monetary, nor was it about the budget. This was actually discussed two years ago, as part of the council's actions in implementing meters and the whole meters system. That's why two years ago, we actually placed in our fee structure, even though it was set at zero, a hourly rate was put into that fee structure. So this is something that didn't just happen this year, it actually had the conversation two years ago, and I think this was just a natural transition into that conversation from a policy perspective, not just from a monetary one. And I think that I'm happy with the manager's recommendation. I don't feel that there is a need to amend that. With that, is there any other comments? Not seeing any. The motion on the floor is to amend and to change the hours of operation, or the hours of the metered, from, to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All those in favor of the motion? Three, all opposed. Four, thank you. Now, the main motion as unamended, as recommended by the town manager. Is there any other comments? Not seeing any?
I'm sorry, I just had a question. In there, it indicates the expectation that coins will be preferred choice to avoid credit card charges. I assume that that's because the credit card charge will include a surcharge to the taxpayer that, to the individual?
I'm speculating, but there'll be a third-party vendor that handles that transaction, and they typically do have a percentage that they charge.
He would vote for that, right?
But I may be wrong, and people choose to do that anyway.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor of the main motion. One, two, three, four, all opposed. One, two, three, that passes. There are no non-action items. Moving into item number nine, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. I hope that, given the hour in our reports, that we might be cognizant of abbreviated version of your remarks. I'll start with Council Kiazow.
So I'll just be very brief. I wanted to give a comprehensive plan update from the long-range planning committee. There's a lot of activities going on, we're really starting to pick things up. So a couple of highlights this summer. We've added a dedicated comp plan section to the town website. We've launched a separate community engagement website at ScarboroughEngaged.org, and that's as it sounds, Scarborough-E-N-G-A-G-E-D.org, all one word. I would hope, and hopefully that's up on our website as well, is a link. We'll begin a series of four general outreach meetings in different areas of the town. We've established an evening meeting with the long-range planning committee, dedicated specifically to the comprehensive plan. We've begun an outreach to the community on Planapalooza. There's been some question about the naming of that, but that's basically the group, the opportunity for everybody to come together and for the planning process, which will take place on the week of September 25th. And we've begun collecting data on growth, development, and natural resources. So long-range planning committee meetings, based on the comments at the kickoff meeting, we wanted to make long-range planning meetings more accessible. During the duration of the comprehensive plan process, the long-range planning committee will meet on the first Thursday of the month, in the evenings, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And we'll normally meet at town hall if space is available, otherwise, I'm sure we'll put up on the website if we have to relocate to other areas. Everyone is welcome to the meetings, and there will be time for public comment. And the area meetings have begun, there was, so these meetings are being conducted at various areas around town. They're the exact same meetings. So if you missed last night's, which was in two places, the North Scarborough Grange Hall and Higgins Beach, if you missed that, there is one on Thursday at Pine Point Fire Station, Thursday, August 17th. And those start from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And there's also one on Thursday, August 24th, at the Scarborough Public Library. So those meetings are all identical, they're part of the Scarborough Impact for the Future, and it is a meeting to tell us about Scarborough. Your ideas will shape the town for years to come. All meetings will be, will cover the same comment and run 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and, excuse me, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and anybody can attend at any location. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Council Hayes?
Nothing this evening.
Council Sinclair?
Okay.
Council Donovan?
Planning Board met August 7th. Extensive review of both the sign ordinance and the Higgins Beach Character Code ordinance, positive recommendation from the planning board on both, but I would qualify that, that they had considerable number of questions that were helpful, I thought, in being able to improve the sign ordinance. Gateway Commons, which we all recall, received its final site plan review approval, but we did not have any information on a phasing schedule. I'll get that from Jay Chase for the next meeting and report that out at that time.
Council Rowan?
Thank you. Scarborough Housing Lines met. It has had trouble with a quorum, there are two vacancies on that committee, but we did have a developer who had taken a density bonus appear before the committee, interested in guidance in terms of the, we had changed from 120% of area meeting income to 80%. He had received the bonus prior to that, and so had questioned about the, what would happen, and the committee is, needs to be, have a quorum to make a recommendation, unfortunately. The 55-plus advisory committee met twice, had a discussion about the outdoor space membership structure and fees, and there had been some consternation around the membership structure and fees, and they just wanted to get information out that they're not making any changes at this point, they're just looking in terms of what they might do in terms of changing the membership. They have taken feedback around maybe charging non-members a little bit more for some of the trips. Also, there was some concern that, around the discussion about Martin's Point, that maybe they weren't really welcome there, and that's not the case. Martin's Point loves having them there, and they love being in Martin's Point, it's just been a space crunch issue. Speaking of Martin's Point, they have chair yoga Thursdays at 9:00 a.m. And next week in Memorial Park is the summer barbecue, so they can accommodate more individuals, but you still need to register, so they have a head count. And there are going to be, some of the outdoor space games will be present, bocce, croquet, cornhole, so it should be fun. It'll be, the bus, the buses in the normal, the normal student parking lot for the high school students will be busing down, and that'll start at 11:00 a.m. next Wednesday.
Thank you. Council Foley?
Not much. Actually, my committee's canceled, and I thought this was interesting, because they wanted to make sure that people weren't double-dipping because of the comp plan neighborhood meetings. And I thought that was a great idea, and I think that we should all be, try to be cognizant as we go forward. I feel like the comprehensive planning opportunities to get involved have been shadowed a little bit because of all the, for good reason, but I don't want us, as a community, miss that opportunity, to get people excited and involved. So the only other thing is, the communications table, or meeting committee did meet, we did submit our first draft, and looking for feedback from the chair, and when we get that, we'll get it to everybody, I would assume, for feedback. And then the roundtable next Wednesday, not the end of the month. A week from today, 23rd.
And as chairman, I only have one item that I'd like to share and hand out to each of you. So we've had a couple of conversations, and we're a little late because of some distractions with referendums, but I do want to at least hand out, it's that time of year for us to check in on our goals and where we are. So what I've done is I've provided a copy of the narrative statement, but then also the presentation that had the matrix and what all of our core goals were, the outcome and actions, and then also what we considered would be successful measures or metrics. What I'd like to ask is from each of you, and I will also send this by email, so that if you are privy to do that, it is in a PDF format, I believe, or PowerPoint. PowerPoint, so you might need to be able to have that program. You're welcome to just resubmit it back to me electronically, but if you could, please go through each of these, the metrics, and assign a rating of one to three. One is we were unsuccessful. Three is that we were successful. And two is that kind of, that balanced area where, you know, we've been, we're at least moving forward towards it, or we're moving far away from it, it's kind of that transition. So if you can do that for me, and then also provide any personal comments, I'll try to summarize all of that, so that we can then have a workshop in September around this issue. Council Kiazow?
Could you just put that on SharePoint as well? Please, thank you.
Any other questions about this? Pretty easy instructions, I hope, and we'll get started on that review process. And with that, turn over to the town manager for his report.
Just three quick things, if I could. I'm very pleased to announce that I hired Liam Gallagher as new HR director. Very pleased with the candidate pool. Liam comes with quite a bit of municipal experience, and extremely pleased to have part of the senior staff. He'll start with us September 11th, so he's begun already to take the transition. He's met with the folks in the HR office, and has already started to form a team, so very pleased to have him on board. FEMA flood maps are being reissued. You'll hear more and more about this. There'll be a meeting next week of community officials first, and the next step will be actually official issuance of the maps, and that will start the 90-day appeal period. So do pay attention. It appears as though this version of maps is very similar to the last version, and I really can't detect too many changes, but there are impacts in certain areas of town, for sure. We continue our struggle with beach raking on Pine Point Beach. I've tried to keep you appraised, and I have talked to the residents, many of them as well, and they seem pleased with our efforts. We're trying to be smart about our resources, smart about the weather forecast, particularly over the weekends, and the tide schedule. But it seems twice a day we are reminded of the challenges down there, but doing our best, for sure. There's a paving schedule on the website, there's a fair amount of activity starting tomorrow through the end of next week. For those of us, Kate and I, that live on the other side of the marsh, that's really where a lot of the activity will happen. But it's important to get this work done while the weather's good, and really before school is in. And lastly, I just want to take a moment to recognize Richie Moulton. Tiny was a longtime member of our staff with the fire department, and now more recently with the fire police. He was Robbie's younger brother, and certainly well-known. I was not able to attend his services, but I heard it was just a blockbuster event, you know, waiting hours to get in, and that really was a testament to how many people that Tiny touched in this town. He'll certainly be missed. Thank you.
Councilmember comments? Council Donovan?
Thank you.
Council Foley?
Yes. Oh, I mean, no, I'm good.
Council Sinclair?
No.
Council Hayes?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Council Kiazow?
Yes, one comment. Summer fest, this Friday.
Oh, shoot, that was on my list.
And I'm going to challenge everybody sitting behind this table, I believe there's a dunk tank.
Did you get it?
I believe there's a dunk tank, and I will bring shorts.
I'll do it.
If anybody's willing to sit there, if it means...
I've got 50 bucks ready.
Whatever it takes. So I'm willing, I'm not doing it alone, I want help, so. And I also think we have a table, Kate, so I'm not sure if we're going to do this.
So, and I also think we have a table, Kate, so I'm not sure if we're going to do, how you want to do scheduling or something like that. So that's all.
And I have only two things. One is, just want to remind the voters that absentee validating and voting is available during normal business hours at the town clerk's office. And so you can share, there's a deadline in which you can vote, but please vote early. And I too also wanted to send my condolences to Robbie and his family. I knew Tiny only frequently, infrequently, and I know he was a big part of the family,